Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Town Superior Board of Trustees for Monday, December 16th, 2019. Phil, could we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Kim Folsom.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lasas.
Here.
Trustee Sandy Hemmerly.
Here.
Ken Lish.
Here.
Kevin Ryan.
Here.
Neil Shaw.
Here.
Laura Swazinski. Town Manager Matt LaFager.
Here.
Town Attorney Tandra Carberry. Town Attorney Phil Sartin here.
All right, thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda, which is a pretty short agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? A motion by Mayor Pro Tim Lasas.
Before we vote on that, real quick, because I saw we don't have a reports section tonight. I saw that we still have doodle polls going around and looking at the first quarter. I think there was another date thrown out in February for our retreat. If possible, and it looks like none of us are going to be able to get together in the same place at the same time, but I would encourage us to try to get this done in January. I think going back and looking at it, our last retreat was in July. There's a lot on our list and if we could stop postponing it, I think that'd be the best, best efficient move. So if we can ignore that February date and actually settle on one in January, I think that'd be appreciated by all so we can move forward.
Okay. Could we, do you want to look at some new dates or send out some new...
I have an idea that I'll share at the end of the meeting with you.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Lasas and second by trustee Lish, all those in favor of approving the agenda. Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, we'll get right into our discussion of 1500 Colton Road building improvements now.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe Levy and Amanda Johnson from Oz Architecture are here tonight to give a presentation to the board with regard to the building we purchased last year, 1500 Colton Road. Their concepts and visions for the building. Want to get your feedback and comments on it so that we can refine the concept for the building. They were nice enough to meet with trustee Swazinski last week, so we were able to get her comments on the presentation as well, so we have those. So I appreciate that. And with that, invite you up to the podium.
Thank you.
I'm Amanda Johnson, Joe Levy with Oz Architecture. Thanks for having us tonight. We're super excited to start to envision the future of this building for the Town of Superior and equally as excited about this work session because more so than any project, there are tremendous opportunities for the potential of this building and how we choose to program it for the benefit of the community. And so we're calling this a work session in the sense that it's not necessarily formal. We encourage and engage as many comments or feedback as you guys have. We have three kind of tiers in the process of work session. The first was with staff and that happened a few weeks ago. Now we're meeting with you all and then in January, the community will also have a work session. So when we blend all of those together, hopefully we can really come up with an amazing space here. So right now, in the context of design and moving the project forward, we are really focused on program. You guys have done and the community has done a wide variety of brainstorming to come up with an ideal program. And that is still a little bit in flux. And so our hope is that as we put some different programs and sizes of spaces on the screen for you guys today, we can really start to understand how program might fit into the space and activate it. So today, we're going to walk through a couple or a series of work session topics. The first is kind of what is this project? Why are we here? What are our design drivers? Next, we'll go into work session outcomes as well as site opportunities, what it is, what it isn't. You can see then how the program translates into the space and then some vision opportunities as well. So as we start any project, we like to look at it from a macro perspective and we'll use this document as sort of a guiding light as it evolves over time. And so capturing from staff to you all to the community, what are our project targets is what this page will continue to evolve into. So far, from a vision perspective, we understand that this wants to be vibrant. It wants to be a community hub, a unique project, an identity for the community and versatile. From a human perspective, we want it to be a gathering place, multi-generational, and we want the community to be really proud of this environment. Technically, we want an adequate system to be able to allow the space to be useful, versatility, flex from small to large, screening, Wi-Fi and infrastructure to support it. From a business perspective, we need to start to identify if there's some type of private partnership in the sense of maybe a small component as well as a larger kind of programming component. Is it open all the time? How do we scale or staff it in order to be safe if that's the goal of the space? How do we subsidize it so that it can flex for different group sizes? We want it to also kind of flex everyone's perspective and be a combined outcome for Superior. And then in terms of the new building, we see a lot of opportunities with what's currently there. There's a lot of, you know, the garage doors can start to introduce a sense of indoor and outdoor connection. We want to be able to utilize back of house spaces and then really just program spaces within the zones of the footprint that we currently have. When we start to think about where this is and who this is for Superior, we really are trying to understand at the heart what the culture of Superior is and who the people, who is this for? We've heard it's for kids, it's for the future, it's for kind of hippie yuppie mix that has personality that makes it home and unique. There could be a library or study component. Food and restaurants make up Superior. You're really active. We want to program the space. We want to get our hands dirty in some of the ways we engage with it. Open paths in the sense of being active and connected to the outdoors and then a place for us to like play or hang out and congregate here instead of moving away. So when we talk about this, we're calling it a community market. When you walk in the front door, when you pull into the lot, we want the experience to be immediate and we want that to start to identify how people experience the space. And so far, we've created three pillars, you can see, of how we create the experience. The first is connecting with the town, then integration with local and always at a macro perspective. So connection with the town, we're starting to think of it being events focused potentially, but we also heard that the downtown space might be a better area for meetings or weddings. We want it to be group focused. We want it to be an everyone space. We want programming to activate it. Maybe there's a child literacy component that's connected to the library and also programming for active adults as well as families. Integrating with local, we think this is really fun in the sense that we can engage in what makes Superior unique and the businesses and personalities within that. So we can imagine showcasing local art, maybe hosting local music, local products, having a revolving taproom. Maybe home brewers can be featured for a weekend in this space. Food trucks or kind of guest nights for local restaurants if we choose to have a food and beverage component so that they are kind of featuring a dish at this location that can be sold to help activate the space as well. And then in a macro perspective, you know, it's inspiring to us that you guys have identified this space for this marketplace type use. You see it a lot in public or private development and not as much where the town is really spearheading and identifying this as a location to bring the community together. So with that, we want to have a national presence. We want this to be a reference for other communities that are trying to do the same thing or something similar and strive for excellence in that. Next, we're starting to look at what are the design drivers? How is it going to look? How's it going to feel? How are the aesthetics aligned with the experience? Nature, we're also kind of describing as industrial, so it's forming, it's living, it's natural carbs, it's comfortable exploration. It's adventurous. When you walk in the front door, it's dynamic and active and engaging, energetic. And then for the community, it's healthy, it's resourceful, responsible, quality, efficiency, innovation. Existing building opportunities and constraints, you guys are familiar with the building itself, so we don't need to spend a lot of time here. But from outside looking in, some of the unique elements around, say, the garage doors, where instead of it being in front of a sea of parking, we might be able to carve some of that out and create indoor/outdoor space so that when the doors are open, people can flow to an outdoor environment. You know, taking funny, unique elements like this in the corner that can start to be maybe bike parking or really engaged with how people get there. And then at the same time, kind of the small appendages on the side, those lead themselves to maybe more specific programming elements. And then when we're in the space, we see, we love the volume and how, you know, even though this was originally for Land Rover, the idea that some of the connections and the materials are natural and the steel and they kind of have this industrial and natural marriage that comes together to create a really unique space and then taking some of maybe the existing things that make the space the space and reinterpreting them into the design and light fixtures or other unique ideas. When we talk about the site, there's a handful of things that we look at. The first probably being, where's our front door? How do people get to it? How do we want people to know that this is a space for them or most people, are we trying to bring most people through on Colton? Or are we also trying to create an entry identity off of Rock Creek Parkway? Even though that currently is a pretty busy intersection where most people are just used to turning right to go to Starbucks or other things like that. So in this idea of creating an identity, does it have multiple front doors? Does it have one front door? And how does that start to engage with the existing? And then, you know, how do we connect to bike paths or allowing people to come from their home on a bike and comfortably like park their bike in a secure location or even use it as a spot to tune up their bike or something like that? And then even in the sense of, I think Matt brought this up, but coming up with a unique way to reinterpret or reimagine how that old, that rocky road was established and does that become some part of a design element within the space or reusing some of the existing stone that's around the side into this design as well? When we break it down pretty black and white to what it is, what it isn't, we start to imagine that it's open, it's light and clean, it's modern but comfortable. It's collaborative, it's, there's a sense of longevity, it's airy and textural, relaxed, creative, engaging, professional. It's not over the top, uncomfortable, it's not kitschy or goofy or extravagant or cold or edgy. This is one space that we might stop and have a quick dialogue on in terms of the program. It's evolved over a long period of time and right now, the list of program opportunities that we've currently been tasked with are on the far left corner in gray between co-working, library, meeting, study, events, teen and senior space, maker space, office space, performance space, a teaching kitchen potentially, or just more a food and beverage component that's unique and can support local activities as well. So is there anything else from y'all's perspective that maybe needs to make it on the list or doesn't have as much of a priority than others?
So I'll start just with logistics here. So this is great and really appreciate kind of leading up to this. Went through those other slides really fast, so there's a lot of, you know, we could have had some, a lot of dialogue, but I'm glad we're pausing here. What is, so the RFP, so there's three columns here. The RFP column is, you know, this is sort of what we laid out in the, in the, in the RFP itself and is what's added in pen or what is that?
Throughout the work sessions to date, we've come up with these as additional things to consider.
For example, the work sessions with staff.
Yeah.
Which are really the only work sessions we've had so far.
And the other trustee last week, yeah.
Okay, perfect. And then what is the middle column?
Well, there was a survey that's sent out. Do I have to? Okay, I don't have a form on you.
Yeah, well, it's just for the millions watching at home.
Oh, no, you may be nervous. No, no, there was, there was a survey that was sent out to the neighborhood that I got from Matt. I forget the exact name of the survey. Oh, okay. Right, so those were the, the two documents that we had that had surveyed the, the neighborhood, the community. So that's where that came from. So I sort of tried to match what was there and of course, some things are missing, so that's why.
That's helpful. I just, I wasn't sure. And then the third column is the indoor space, is the activity, the, the, the serp. This, you know, I consider the second one, I really appreciate Laura, what she did, but it's very sort of anecdotal, you know, provide feedback, not...
Well, yeah, I, that's, I put the petting zoo at the, at the end there to kind of show that that's kind of...
Right, and the third one is, is, was a robust activity that we did, so.
Okay, right, yeah.
If we're waiting these, well, it's, you know, it's dated, it's five years old. And have you seen the, so we've been doing some activity with a consultant. Have you seen the result of that activity, Happy City, any of that?
No, we have not.
Okay.
Is that available? Is it? Okay, we can look that up.
Yeah, there's...
We don't have the final report yet, but...
Yeah, the objective there is for, kind of to create a master plan around public art and spaces and placemaking. But there have been a couple information gathering sessions, you know, what does the community need type of sessions. There's some pretty significant data points that intersect with this space, right? A lot of what people say, you know, gathering space and sense of community, it's all directionally consistent with what we're seeing in these three columns. So it might be helpful for you.
So you're saying that this, that would be, this building is a key piece of what the activity's going on?
Sorry.
Do you mind coming up to the mic to speak? We just can't, it's a microphone thing, we just can't get...
So I understand that that would be, this building is a key piece of what you're doing. And I understand that's out now and they're, they're working on that, so, but if we can get an earlier copy, we'd be glad to kind of look at that. And I'm sure everything's going to dovetail, but we are aware that's going on.
Okay, perfect. And then are these, are the suggestions, they're numbered, but they're numbered almost more for...
Quantity, yeah.
Right, not...
Not by preference or priority.
But, but the numbers on the far right are kind of, they did organize those on that study from 2014. So the one would be the fitness was the most wanted space and the next thing was library services. So those actually did get qualified on that, but the other ones, it just, the order that the RFP was written, I took it right off that. So there wasn't any specific order on that.
I, I appreciate you listing all this out and I think one of the things that we need to be cognizant of and careful of and I appreciate that you alluded to is not over-programming this and picking and choosing what we try to put into this space versus what we try to put into our civic space in downtown Superior and what may or may not make the list at all. As I am looking at this list here on the left and what has translated in the other columns as well, one that jumps out at me is that could potentially use a disproportionate amount of space for the usage it would get is the teaching kitchen slash commercial, commercial kitchen. If we don't have something that's in use consistently and constantly and it's something that's so specialized that it won't get regular use, I've got to think that might be something we consider dropping off our list. Beyond that, I do appreciate that at the bottom, we've added some type of a playground type feature. We're, we're thinking along those lines. One of the goals that I have for this space is that there's got to be something there for everybody. So programming, clearly we've got the teen and senior space up there, but I want to make sure that it's inviting for families, whether it's teens, young kids, being able to have kids go out there and do something. I want to make sure that we give people a reason to be there, that we don't give them a reason not to be there. I would go, but I don't, there's nothing for my kids to do or something along those lines. So if we could be thinking along what, what we could do outside, I appreciate the comment of what can we do with those excess boulders on the side? But additionally, and this was probably a comment for the end, but this is a large pleased piece of property and the building itself only takes up a certain percentage of that. We've got a lot left and I'd be curious to see whether, what other ideas you have to use that space and make sure we're actually getting value out of the entire property, not just the, the physical building.
Just a question, you know, because we've been very public about our, our budget for this is $2 million. But when you put all this into the, into the salad bowl and you start trying to figure out how do you mix it together and extract something that fits within $2 million, you know, arguably, a lot of what Kent just alluded to, you know, there's incremental costs depending on where you go. Are you going to help us kind of à la carte the list so that if you want to go above $2 million, here's the five other things and what they would incrementally cost? You know, just if we want to create, you know, a side building or something else like that?
We absolutely can. I think our biggest goal too is to give you guys a really flexible space. So with the, if we make the bones right and maybe program a component for, like, let's say, the food and beverage component, there's a small piece. And then let everything else be rooms or really flexible spaces that we can continue to invest in over time or choose to invest in other things as the project and it evolves.
Okay, that's really helpful.
So we'll probably have more things in the basket than you can necessarily afford, but we will list the price of it and we can kind of see where we can maybe not quite, as Amanda said, finish it this time, but allow for it to come on later. And then of course, as Mr. Lish said, that probably the most expensive space would be a teaching kitchen. It'll take up the most space and be the most expensive, so maybe that gets somehow, just kind of slowly, we'll get some utilities to it, but not finished, yeah.
Fair, thanks.
So we're going to think like that. Thank you.
Any other comments on program? I guess, so we have a couple of you talking. I'll go back at three slides, a few slides here to the positioning and culture. I think it's really important for us to all agree on what makes us special so that this building can really lean in hard on that. Is there anything else that you, you might like to add to this? Your fellow trustee added maybe gear lending potentially within Superior to reinforce our, our connection to the outdoors and allowing our families to come here and get some gear and go.
Yeah, I think that's a good add. I mean, I, what's, I mean, I'll start. I mean, I, I like everything that's, that's on here. I do think it's the, you know, the sense of just community gathering in place where, you know, we are, effectively our brand is, whether or not we like it or not, is a bit of a bedroom community and there, we just don't have a real core where people will gather. We do, of course, have the downtown area that's in development, but that's still for the, most of us, it's going to require a car trip, to be honest, where this is quite literally in the, in the central area. But I, you know, I, for me, what's important is the library and the concept of a library to me is, you know, very much lending. Although it's not just, you know, the antiquated concept of a library, we actually, there's another data point for you to have. We had a presentation a couple of years ago around the future of a library. And so Matt, maybe if you could share that data point with Oz, that presentation with Oz? But I, to reinforce what Laura said, you know, I think a library is not just a place where you would get books, but it's a place where people would gather and people might be able to not just borrow a shovel, but potentially borrow, you know, skis or, you know, a bike or an electric bike or something. I do like that general concept, although I don't know, again, the level of...
The gist's there.
As the level of complexity goes up, so goes the level of, of cost. And one of the key things I want to learn today, and primarily I want to hear from you and talk as little as possible, which is hard for me, just genetically.
You're doing fine.
But I want to, I want to hear the vision for sort of how the, how this building sustains itself. Is this a building where we are, as a community, we're just going to underwrite at, ex hundreds of thousands of dollars per year and that's what we're going to do? Or through a public-private partnership, we think there's an ability to take, you know, 40, 50, 80% of the operating costs to be covered through that public-private partnership? Or is this just pure amenity? It's going to be a, you know, things that are, you know, parked like amenities where it's going to be, you know, it's going to have a library which doesn't generate revenue. It's going to have a maker space which doesn't generate revenue. It's going to have, you know, a place where you could get your bikes serviced, which won't generate revenue presumably. Or is it going to have that, you know, the rotating brewery type of concept you had, which presumably would generate revenue? I don't think we'll be giving the community away beers to the community. So that's one of the things that I'm kind of interested in learning about, kind of the, the plan for sustainability for this building.
Okay, well, we are concentrating on now, pretty much, what could go in the building and to serve that and how that actually works is a little bit beyond our scope, I think, but there are some studies. So we want to make sure it's flexible enough. We are looking at ways, so if there is a restaurant component, could that be leased out and all that? We can make pretty discreet spaces that could be leased out and things like that. But you're right, most of the things that we're talking about, the senior center, the youth center, for lack of better terms and all that, are just spaces that the community's provided. And if, if they, you know, rent it out, it'll be so nominal, I'm sure, that it really isn't going to generate enough money or be used enough. We do these a lot for nonprofits. We make space so people can come in, hey, do you have a space I can come to and all that. That's typically what happens, more like that when the community does it. But there, there are, you know, there, there is the opportunity to do that. We talked about having more kind of fairs and showing people's wares and local people and all that. And maybe you do have a few times a year, you can pay a nominal fee and come and show off and things like that. But it's really hard just to see how to generate, that that doesn't mean someone can come to you and say, hey, I need 3,000 square feet. Do you have a place in there? And we certainly can carve that out and we're looking to create some kind of spaces that can be fairly discreet. And with the outside garage doors and all that, you could really have kind of a... And with the outside garage doors and all that, you could really have kind of, you have an image on the street or whatever. So you can have your own identity too within the identity of the center and maybe not have to wander through. So those are some of the initial thoughts we have. But I can't tell you that, you know, there's a private-public, that some great thing is gonna come down and make sure that this thing is self-sustaining. I don't see it just yet, but we could work with the people you're using and they could say, we really have somebody who's looking at space like this, can we provide it? And I think in this space, we can provide just about anything. We can do that. So that would be helpful if we knew that.
I think the only thing that you don't have on this list right now that I think describes our culture specifically here in Superior is engaged slash giving. I mean, we've got just an inordinate amount of people who volunteer their time, whether it's with the town, whether it's local nonprofits, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce for the town of our size, I think we've got a very engaged community that's giving of their time and energy.
That's admirable, yes.
Any other comments on this one?
Before we get into the design, I do wanna talk about, on the specifics, Ken brought it up, the concept of the kitchen itself. I mean, I actually, so we've been thinking about this for over a year now. And when I shared with a colleague the space, he immediately went to not necessarily a teaching kitchen, but a cloud kitchen, you know, a shareable kitchen that is actually for rent. And so there's enough, you know, foodies in Boulder County and this area where they may need a commercial type kitchen that is for rent between, you know, 10:00 PM and 3:00 AM to make their, you know, granola that they're shipping for the month or whatever they're making. So while it is, the teaching kitchen or commercial kitchen may have the extremely high expense, it may also, and I don't know this, I don't have data to support it, but it may, I wanna underscore the may, have the opportunity to be a true commercial aspect of this. Although I do not think, just for the record, I do not think this space, I'm not interested in underwriting a restaurant in this space with the town funds. I think that would be a mistake to do so because I think if a restaurant would have thrived in that space, it would have been opened years ago. And I don't wanna, we've got a couple of restaurants across the way by the Safeway and I don't necessarily wanna compete with another, you know, underwritten Italian restaurant, you know, and bring people away from the Italian restaurant across the way. But the concept of the cloud kitchen or a teaching kitchen is sort of of interest to me, but I agree that that's gonna, it's gonna take a lot of space and a lot of money.
So you know, we have a kitchen consultant on board and so they can help us and I haven't heard of the cloud kitchen before, but I think that may be sort of a middle ground because right now, we've asked them to look at, I mean, they haven't done any work yet, but look at a teaching kitchen for three to four. So basically, you've repeated the kitchen four times, so people have all the access to that so they can be taught. So I think we can look at that aspect of it. So far, we've only been talking about more of a catering kitchen, but maybe there's somewhere in between. And I know some, have some friends who can sort of rent out the space, go there, make their wares, it's all certified and it's all healthy and all that. So that's an interesting concept that we will explore, yes.
And I'm not interested in crossing anything off the list right now. I just wanna go through the community process, but yeah.
Yeah, there's stuff that's, and part of it, I like the process, you know, talk to staff, talk to, and most importantly, you know, the most important step on this is engage with the community, of course.
The only thing that I would add to the kind of positioning and culture slide is I think there is certainly more attention given towards art and, you know, community art in particular. Although, you know, a lot of Superior is a master-planned, you know, bedroom community, you know, part of the growing pains that the town has gone through is trying to figure out what its identity is and that's what we're going through with our CAPS committee. So we've got, you know, a committee that's designed for cultural arts and public spaces. So incorporating art, I think, is obviously part of the design in any event and the feel, but it's somehow incorporating the ability to have rotating, you know, art exhibits and installations in this community center would be, I think, something to add to this as well.
Good add.
Yeah, and that would greatly add to the space and make it even more enjoyable and more people wanna come, I think, if we can do that. I don't see why we wouldn't, you know?
Just to comment on this slide, as I looked at the schematics, option one and two, both of them had a little coffee shop. And fundamentally for me, I wanna make sure that whatever we do here isn't in conflict with existing businesses. There's literally a Starbucks that's like thirty feet away.
Right.
We are not gonna outsell Starbucks, nor do I want even try. You know, so I just wanted to be cognizant of the other businesses that are nearby. And as Kevin alluded to, you know, if this was gonna be a successful spot for a restaurant, we would have seen it ten years ago. So we wanna be careful that whatever we're subsidizing is something that's an aggregate benefit to the community that wouldn't just succeed on its own.
Yeah, perfect. And we'll walk through some more specific thoughts around like those spaces, but we totally hear you and agree with that. Okay, at a high level, just a conceptual mood that we're starting to imagine, the idea that this space is warm and the hues of the space are warm and welcoming, maybe connected to the outdoors or abstracted and some of the materials or colors or natural elements that you see when you went on your hike this morning can start to inform how these spaces engage with what, with our space in particular. We're gonna dig into design expressions before we hit into the actual program opportunities themselves. So on each of these pages, it's really helpful for us to, if anyone says, I don't like this or I really like this, just to pay quick attention to or let us know so we can make a mark and it'll start to funnel the experience. But first impressions, we imagine it to be engaging and welcoming, artistic might come into play, like a big mural on the inside or outside of the building. Bold, inspiring, flexible, impressive and local. And so some of these spaces that we show here pay close attention to how we treat an entry or with light or a mood or the volume of the space or in the middle connecting to the outdoors with garage doors as an example.
Any comments?
Next, and we've kind of tried to break these down into each of the program components that we just spoke about, but if we do have coworker library spaces, how are they expressed in a way that's transitional and not the typical library that you might see? They're flexible, they're multiple use. This center image starts to show room within rooms that can also be really flexible. Do we have a literal library almost shown like in this top left or potentially study zones in the bottom, sorry, top right, bottom left? Any likes or dislikes in this image?
So first, I think the key word that's been, it's shown up a few times here for me is flexible.
Uh huh.
You know, I definitely don't, I'm, I'd like, I believe, for there to be as few bolt downs as possible to allow us to be flexible with this space. So there's, you know, we have 15,000 square feet. If something doesn't work, then I'd like to be able to pivot away from that without spending hundreds of thousands of dollars more in taxpayer money. The room within the room concept is perfect and, you know, for me, the most important thing is that this is, you know, while in that early slide, you know, it's kids and growing, but this really is that all ages space to your first point. And so it is a place where a mom who's staying at home can bring their toddler or infant who's available for reading time and at the same time, might be able to sit in a comfortable space. And I do wanna sort of disagree. I do think that coffee is gonna be a necessary element here and, you know, Starbucks has parked themselves next to thousands of coffee shops across America. I have no problem with, this is not a coffee shop we're standing up. This is a community gathering area, you know, gathering and socializing, you know, coffee and tea and, you know, non-alcoholic drinks and potentially alcoholic drinks, which we'll talk, which we'll get to, I think, are a key part of that gathering. And so I don't personally, I personally don't worry about if we sell decaffeinated beverages that might take somebody away from spending six bucks at Starbucks, whatever, you know, I don't worry about that. But the point I was trying to make is, number one, flexible is important to me and the library, cowork, shared space, all ages, very important to me.
And frankly, you know, that Starbucks that is on the corner there, Rock Creek Circle and Colton, I wouldn't be surprised if Starbucks says, you know what, can we move into this space because they don't have enough room in their existing space, you know? So I mean, I think that that's just something to consider. So I do agree that, you know, if we're gonna make this inviting, if we're gonna make this as a coworking space, a library, whatever, it's gonna be something that you want people to gather at, you're gonna need to have something to offer them to keep them happy and caffeinated.
And I'll echo what Kevin said about the idea of the room within the room and the bolt downs. I like the idea of the room within the room and minimizing our bolt downs, but I imagine, and you as are the expert in design, that you have to kinda balance the character that we're adding and what the room actually feels like. And oftentimes, that requires bolt downs. I mean, I look at the stadium seating, for example, I imagine that's not something like our gym where we could slide it in and out when we were kids and add something special, but it's certainly not something we can necessarily move around once it's there. And I think that does add value. I would be cautious about maybe setting something up like in the middle of a room, like in that picture towards the middle there, but yeah, I absolutely agree.
Yeah, I'm excited to talk about the stadium seating because I think there's a few places that you guys probably did in Denver that have experimented with the stadium seating. So when I saw this, I'm sort of going out of my way to, I think it's just brilliant because it does serve multiple purposes where you could sit and sit with somebody privately at the same time if you have, you know, taking 110 chairs and storing them somewhere and wheeling them out, what a pain. But the stadium seating that serves that multiple purpose, you can only sit and relax, but it's also a great, literally built-in seating area. I love it.
Great. Next, we'll go to community and lounge spaces. In these, we want them to be social, sophisticated, multifunction, community-centered, natural and comfortable. So we imagine, or some of these feel almost like that hotel lobby that's really welcoming and a gathering space. Soft seating as well as spaces for two tops or four tops or lounge chairs. That bottom left, you know, if we start to have something that's more built-in or structured around, can it be natural in the materials that we select so that it feels like it's part of the space? Any likes or dislikes?
I really like the, that image in the top middle. I mean, that to me is kind of, it already feels like what that building is already designed for, you know, with the exposed kind of ductwork, then the steel, you know, girders and the exposed wood. It's kind of an industrial look, it's modern. And I think the most important thing with that is that it's open. You know, one concern that I have about kind of the room within the room is kind of breaking up the openness of the room. So, you know, to the extent that we're talking about the ability to do, you know, modular walls or something like that, you know, something that could create smaller rooms if we wanted to, you know, that would be something. But if we parked something like a, and that looks like a big shed in the middle of the room, that really breaks up the space, whereas, you know, this image here is just really like an open and inviting space that could be a hotel lobby, it could be a coworking space, it could be, you know, a study area for students, for all people. So I really like that feel.
I agree with Mark. Just a curiosity, relative to your staff, do you guys have any acoustics people? Because, you know, when we think about some of these spaces, the acoustics in the front room would be pretty good. You get to the concrete building and we go to these open spaces and it's gonna be loud. You know, what, is that gonna be part, contemplated as part of the design depending on what we're trying to do? I mean, if you wanna have a small community gathering place and you're in that concrete building, you're not gonna hear a conversation with somebody five feet away from you if there's thirty people in the room. So I'm just curious in terms of how you balance that.
Well, you're actually, you're absolutely right. We do need to have that. I didn't quite put that in the feed, but we'll see if we can get that in for just on a little bit. I'm not too much worried in the big space.
Right.
We'll have the furniture, but you're right, when you get back into the shops, the current shops, we'll need something. And typically, it's just some acoustical fabric on the wall and all that, so we can get someone to, you know, absorb is what you're really looking for. But you're right. And if it's concerned, if we have certain rooms that are for like teen play and stuff like that, they're gonna be louder and we'll make sure you close the door, but still, it's gonna be pretty loud in there without some kind of acoustical mitigation there, yeah.
I think the only image that may have turned me off was this one in the lower left. I just don't think that's, well, it's a nice coffee area. I wanna make sure we're matching what the building is. I don't know if that's a representation of what the building is. I think the, and maybe it's just the white in the background, maybe it's the light colors don't, but it doesn't blend and match with the rest. So that'd be the only kind of comment I'd have for integration.
Definitely, those are the kind of comments we're looking for, so yeah, please.
Yeah, as much as I like the one that Mark pointed out, the top one in the middle, I mean, that is, you know, the, I mean, that is Ritz-Carlton-like. What is that a picture of, do you know, off the top of your head?
I don't know.
I mean, it would, it's great, but I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, we, A, you have a fixed pool of money that we're playing with and B, I mean, that's, I mean, it's beautiful, wonderful space, but I wanna be very careful about sort of appropriately setting expectation. Quick anecdote, when we brought in Ranch Capital to build across the street, you know, and their design guidelines, you see a lot of pictures of hotels like the St. Julian, yet, you know, we have the Element. I like the Element, I'm glad the Element has decided to invest in our community, so no knock on the Element, but nobody's bringing their wife to the Element for a glass of wine or their husband to the Element. It's a lovely hotel. And so I just wanna be very careful that as we iterate on these design guidelines, these aren't design guidelines, when we iterate on these documents, what we present to the community is reflective of something that we could execute on. And as beautiful as that diagram, as that middle picture is, I just don't think there's a realistic expectation we could execute on that.
Yeah, and what we're more showing, but I agree with.
Inspired by, right.
Right, yeah.
And I actually do, there's like the furniture here we can source in economical ways. So I don't think that this is setting you up for unrealistic expectations. You can even replay this in.
That's good. We're gonna work together a lot over the next six to nine months, so that's good.
The big thing is that the furniture can take a big space and then divide it up was really what we're showing in the fireplace. Just a few little elements can really make that space so it's not, especially if there's no one in there, just you to make it more comfortable. Okay, but yeah, please keep coming.
Next is youth and maker space, just at a broad level. It's social, fun, multifunctional, community-oriented and unique. So ideas, you know, like on the floor on the bottom left, is there some sort of maze that is non-built-in, that tables can go over, but is also a fun and playful experience for kids? Or to the extent where we choose to have some swings or other elements that are really like games dedicated to more of a youth-type audience? And then the other images, like the middle left over there, identifying space that can be maker space are also really flexible for meetings or tables can pull together or push apart.
I like the idea you have things that people can climb on, personally. I think that that would be great. I mean, I was always thinking of, you know, a game room with pool tables and foosball tables and things like that, you know, something that would be inviting for kids who are, you know, using the teen space, not the study space, but more of a play area. But, you know, the idea that there's, you know, a climbing wall or, not necessarily climbing wall, but some, you know, things that they can climb on, whether it's, you know, these swings or these, you know, kind of climbing bar falls that are, posts that are bolted to the ceiling here. Something that is encouraging activity, I mean, I think is a good thing. We have a very active community here as well. We have a very active community here as well. So, I think we're going to encourage, you know, physical fitness and things like that as well. That's a good, good use of the space.
I think one of the things that keeps coming to my mind is that in the youth and maker spaces, teen spaces and stuff, I don't want any space created in such a way that there is a point in time where it's not being used. So, for example, if you create a teen space, teens are in school from eight o'clock to three o'clock in the afternoon. We don't want to create a space so that it is limited in its use and it basically doesn't get used. I know Prostag, when, used to talk about the fact of, you know, seniors are going to be in the space maybe from nine in the morning till three in the afternoon. That's about the time the teens would come in. So, I'm not necessarily saying we would use the space, but I don't want any space set up in such a way that it is limited and it is empty a bunch of the, you know, during the day because that audience is an event, you know, the seniors probably aren't there at night. They're going to more likely be there in the morning taps in most community centers. So, that's, that's an important component for me because I want these spaces activated, you know, the whole time the facility is open.
Sandy brings up a great point. Lewisville's new rec center, the senior space that they have is actually really flexible in the sense that, you know, and I know they haven't programmed it for teens in the evenings or anything, but they've got a bunch of pool tables in the back and they've got a center atrium with some books and, you know, some low tables and stuff. You know, I show these pictures to my kids. They're like, yeah, that all looks cool. And I have two teenagers. They're not going to know what they know, what they want until it shows up. They like everything, they don't like anything. It's just, the challenge is getting it so that it's adaptable. Because what's cool to a kid today is irrelevant tomorrow, no matter what.
Yeah, one of the most important things we hear, so this community is really grown up. I don't have data to demonstrate this, but I suspect that there are more kind of teens today than there were 10 years ago, right? And so, the kids are sort of aging. Right now, there's literally no place in this community, you know. In Lewisville, at least you could walk around downtown and get an ice cream and, you know, Boulder. You can go to Pearl Street, you know, in Denver, you have thousands of options. Here, literally, the only choice is to go and hang out at the Safeway or the Turf Field, which a lot of the kids and our kids do. So, having, you know, something that can draw the kids into space. And while I do think it is, it's important for the flex, for the space to have that sort of multipurpose, it's a big space, 15,000 square, over 15,000 square feet. I think, you know, I don't think the reality is, you know, a space for teens or pre-teens that's going to have a pool table and a selfie wall and, you know, whatever else. Of course, folks over the age of 18 and seniors can utilize that. But, you know, some of the concepts you have around the, you know, the monkey bar type concept on the top or the swings, I think we really do need to design this so that our teens have a place to go where they feel like they could study for a few hours in the library annex type thing and also burn off a little steam after that and also get a cup of coffee and, you know, maybe kill some time while their parents are meeting friends to gather a beer. So, to get a beer. So, I, I really like, what's very important, so a lot of the consistent feedback I've gotten is do something for the teens. And I think we also need to be aware that it needs to be flexible so it's not, you know, locked. I mean, the teen room at the Lewisville Library, for example, is literally only for teens. That's not what I want. You know, this should be part, feel like it's part of the building, but it's drawing in the teens somehow, is what I'm trying to say. I mean, I think it would be creepy if, if I went into the teen room to hang out. I think people would be in Lewisville. People would be like, what's, what's this old guy doing, right? It'd be weird.
He'd be following you.
I should be able to, in this, if I feel like, you know, swinging with a kid or it's not here, we, our former Parks and Rec Director, we put up a couple Slack line in one of our parks and he calls the Slack lines swings for teens. Because the teens don't, you know, they don't go to the swing sets because there's, you know, a bunch of little kids, but they're very comfortable. Even if they're not walking on the Slack line, they're very comfortable just gathering and sitting on the Slack line. It's giving them sort of a place to go in, in that park. And so, I think sort of the same thing with the, with the swings and the monkey bars. It feels like this would be a place for kids to go. Although I'm the least, according to my kids, I'm the least cool guy out there. So, one final comment that I do need to, I'm going to promise I'm going to try to talk less. We have a Superior Youth Leadership Council. I think that they'd be a great, the Marks liaison for, I think would be a great opportunity to try to get their feedback. They could be a bit of a quiet group, honestly, at, at times. So, you might almost want to create a mini survey or almost send this to them and sort of ask the very, these are amazing kids that are volunteering their time. But if we could find a way to either engage them or other kids in the community around what we should be doing, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, and I brought this up at multiple meetings with them and talked about, you know, the things that we're going to be doing in 2020 and that we're going to want their input on is mainly this and that they're going to have opportunities to participate in it. But the things that we hear from them consistently is they want a place to study and then they want a place to just kind of gather and hang out. So, if we can kill those two birds, we'll deliver a much-needed amenity for this community. Because Kevin's absolutely right. They're, if they're going anywhere, they're, they're going to go down to the mall down, down the road. So, you know, if we want to keep them in Superior, someplace closure to home, we need to have something that they're going to actually want to go to.
And I'm glad the Youth Leadership Council is, is working on this. And I think that's, that's the right direction. And I'm glad that we were focusing on the teens. I would encourage that, again, jumping back to these monkey bars, the swings, if we can integrate little things like that around the building to just, one more diversion, one more amenity, one more thing, whether, and it's something that can be used by, by kids of all ages. I mean, you've got the little kid who could sit on a swing. I could also see a teenager or a 10-year-old with their cell phone sitting there for quite some time. I could see an eight-year-old, nine-year-old playing on the, on a monkey bar type thing that might be right there or a three-year-old with a parent there. I mean, I like these little things that just make it that much more easy to spend time in the room.
So, I think one of our next steps is to find out all these groups that we can engage and they can help us program the space and see if we're going in the right direction or if we need to add something or, you know, look at it a little bit differently. That would be very helpful for us. And we're looking, you know, to have that and look forward to.
And one thing that you just said I wrote down, I think it's great. Like make it easy for anybody to spend time here. It's a great thing to think about. All right, as we move into potentially performance or meeting spaces, this, this slide is a little bit trickier, I think, for us to literally grasp because it means dedicating potentially a specific space for this. But if we do have meeting spaces or performance spaces, let them be flexible, maybe music-oriented, that was also in the program list. Operable or open, I think maybe the most relevant one for us to talk about is on the bottom right here where if it's maybe elevated a little bit, it can be used as a performance space. But if it's not needed for that, we can reprogram it with tables or chairs or other things. But does it, does everyone agree that maybe the stage specifically for performance isn't necessarily a space to dedicate?
I think, I, I want to make sure that we squint when we use the word performance because I think performance sometimes scares people where it means it's a concert. Performance might be a community meeting where, you know, we are, we're not performing, but we're information sharing. There is always a need for businesses and groups looking for spaces. And so, having a slightly, you know, in, in this illustration, I'd say that, you know, the bottom left is exactly what we do not want. In my view, the bottom right is something that, you know, could be repurposed where it is slightly elevated, where somebody's, you know, particularly if it was, you know, within shouting distance of the, of the bench-type seating, then I think that's fantastic. So, I think it's, I was really inspired by this.
Yeah, I, I agree. You know, the bottom left is not functional and flexible in, in terms of, you know, giving us a lot of options. You know, that would be a dedicated stage for performances. What we need is something where, you know, one of the most requested things that we've heard year over year is we need more community meeting space. You know, we'll have, right now, when, when people are meeting, if we've got a large group, they're either meeting here at Town Hall, they're meeting in the community room at the fire station, and that's pretty much it. There's, you know, a pretty small room in the sports stable that, you know, maybe fits about 50 people. But if we're having, you know, a larger community event where, you know, there's going to be any sort of speaker or any sort of, you know, presentation that's given, you know, we certainly need to have that flexibility. And then just, you know, the ability to put 200 chairs in a room for a meeting. I don't know what the number is, but, you know, right now, we're, we're limited. I mean, what's, what's the capacity in this room? 150? 100?
That wouldn't have been comfortable. It'd be right on top of you.
And we were over fire code at the oil and gas meeting. You know, so something where we could actually get everybody who would want to meet at one point in time in this town in the room together would be a great use of the space.
Well, I think that this is one of those where we balance all of our assets because it's hard to think about that now. But when we look at the civic space in downtown Superior, that's going to be an even larger open area than in theory what the open area here could be. So, I, I think it's good that we have that. But in my view, this is, we have our small, over 1,500, we're going to have our medium. And then over in downtown Superior, we'll have our large capacities. The one thing that, and I agree, I'll agree with everything that's been said. I think the lower right is the direction we want to go. But I think making sure that we have a side room somewhere where we can get maybe eight to 10 people in a room that they can have a closed, quiet conversation, that you can have a committee meeting, that you can have a boy scout, girl scout, whatever type of meeting, that we can still activate that area without having to shut down the, the whole, the whole place. Or that you try to have that meeting in the entire large room. It's too loud for, for you to be able to have that. So, I think a small, and whether we're calling that the study or whether that happens in the library, making sure we have that type of flexibility to handle a small, small group as well.
You know, I particularly, the thing that I liked about that space too was the glass walls. Because not only, you know, people might be able to see what the performance was going on or whatever it was outside, it would also had people think about ways to use that. If their wall's there, they're not seeing what's going on inside that room. And so, I really liked the glass part because it would challenge people to say, oh, I never thought about using that room in that way. And so, that part to me was very cool because it also opened up, you know, and exposed folks to different kinds of things that might occur in that room. And, you know, even if they're not in there participating in it, they, they might be sitting outside and watching if there was some sort of a dance recital or something going on. But I, I love that room. That was, I looked at that and said, that's the kind of thing that I want to see one of the larger spaces be is something that could be a variety of different things. And, and that, but the little riser was just enough to give it sort of a stage feel.
Good point.
All right, moving on to the teaching kitchen, which may or may not be as big in our scope anymore. But if you maybe look at these more in terms of space, I think the top couple of images start to give an idea of how we can be light and airy and bright and use the volume of this space. But unless there's something that someone wants to talk about here, I might move on to the next one, which is maybe more food and beverage oriented. If we do have a food and beverage component, that doesn't have to be a food and beverage all the time. It could just be a bar for people to work at during the day. Couple of things that caught our attention in that they're simple, they're open, they're part of the whole space, they're functional, they can be, a lot of these, the bars are almost a component of a larger room and a larger space within that.
I like a lot of what I see. I mean, honestly, I mean, the, the, all of the images that have the exposed kind of ducting and ceilings, I think would work well with this space. You know, I think the look and feel, that's the center image with the, you know, the dark brown, it just aesthetically is nice. And the, the second one from the left on the top. I also like, you know, the image kind of directly below it to the left. Also, it's just kind of an open and airy expanse. You know, that seems like it's, it's flexible space, but it's also, you know, open and inviting. I guess one, one concern that I have, just an overarching concern, is while I believe that there should be some ability for the people that are going to this space to get a cup of coffee, to, you know, to get a bite to eat, you know, I, I share the, the concerns that Kevin raised before that, you know, not interested in subsidizing a restaurant or anything like that that's going to be competing with others. So, if, if there isn't a ready, willing, enabled tenant who's going to come in and actually operate a restaurant there, then, you know, what is, what exactly are we building? You know, what's the purpose of this? Because I'm not interested in us necessarily having a restaurant there. So, you know, in terms of figuring out what the design is, I want us to think carefully about, you know, delivering on an amenity that people would like to have, but then figuring out exactly, you know, what we're in the business of doing here. Because I don't think we're in the business of operating a restaurant.
Yeah, there's, so for me, I mean, this has been a really interesting process, even over, and it's going to get really interesting over the, over the next few months, right? As we figure this out. And there's, you know, we've got a chicken and egg problem, right? We, we went to you for design inspiration and that's what this meeting is all about. And now we need sort of the operating model. We could have started with the operating model and said, okay, we have an anchor tenant type thing. And here's our anchor tenant. And now let's work with the anchor tenant for some design inspiration. But that felt backwards. I think going to you for the inspiration and, and maybe going to the community with some facilitated conversations around the inspiration is the right method, although arguably, we could have done the other thing. What's, I, I do feel, well, a restaurant that serves, you know, that has a menu and appetizers and revolving menus, I, I just don't think that could thrive here. With a kitchen that will take, you know, I grew up in the restaurant industry. So, a, a third of the space would be the kitchen, right? And that's just not, you know, people don't make money there. It's just, it's too much of a challenge. But the work that you did for, we'll name them, for Rayback and Improper City and others, I do think is a model that can and should be leveraged where it does bring adults after, you know, two or three or four P.M. where they're having a beer or two and you do want to have some food there. And the food truck concept is very appealing to me. I do think that, you know, just talking to other communities or similar places, I think if you ask them, you know, what would you, nobody wants to have the full-service restaurant unless you have a community, unless you're a true restaurateur and you know you could draw from outside the community or you're in a true urban setting where you have enough people within a few, within a few miles that they could walk or drive to, right? But there's a difference between, you know, here's a restaurant where you can get some biscotti or a prepackaged sandwich and something a little nicer than that. You know, you could actually have some avocado toast and something better than prepackaged. I do, so what I'm coming in here with a little bit of bias towards is I do want to make sure this is also, you know, it is, if it's for all ages, all ages and it's community gathering, people like to gather over coffee. They also like to gather over a beer. And so, I do see this as a place that has alcoholic beverages that are available. I do think some food should be available. I'm just not interested in a very expensive restaurant-type kitchen that would only be available to that restaurant. that would only be available to that restaurant. And so I want to be able to leverage, number one, food trucks. And so I think you've also shared that concept, and we'll talk about that. And number two, some clean enough space where, you know, the proverbial avocado toast or whatever the new avocado toast will be is also available, right? So there's, you know, less food cooking, more food assembly.
No, we're definitely agree with the food trucks and then even self-service coolers and things like that could all be worked in, so it's not the restaurant. But I agree with you. It's a little cut above grabbing a sandwich out of the 7-Eleven freezer and...
Yeah, that's, to me, that's not...
Then why bother?
Right, exactly. So it's got to be something a little better than that, so. And I think there are other people that have had that model, and I think this is, you know, I think now, once we sort of anchor on some design inspirations, that I think we could take a step back and think, is there some public-private partnership with somebody that might be able to help us through that, so.
And along those lines, do you think the community, so if we have the catering kitchen that spills out to maybe this bar or something, would it be feasible for a local restaurateur to say, feature their burger here for Friday night? And they just serve, it's almost a highlight of local restaurants as opposed to a full restaurant that's separate from this?
If we could pull that off, that would be great. You know, people are doing that, right? And if you could pull that off, I mean, I, I think it would be fantastic. But again, we, we as the, we need to, we talked about this the other night. We need to retrain this community to stay inside the community, right? Because we've been trained that in order to get a hamburger, we go to Boulder or Lafayette or Louisville, right? And so we're going to need to be trained for that.
Well, this space is so spectacular.
Okay, so now we're going to move into a couple...
Real quick before we go on, just talking about design pieces, and I think Mark made a real good comment. I think the, well, the middle, the middle-left one up there, I think, is the best representation of at least what I'm viewing and what I'm hopefully seeing. I think if we're starting down on the bottom there, the second to the left and the two middle ones, I think, again, we're missing the color palette a little bit. We're not matching the building with the design and the features. And the bottom-right one, the curves, the way that is designed, that's more reminiscent of an old-time diner to me. And I don't know necessarily if that's the image we're going for. And then the upper-right, I think the thing that that is missing is that that's a flat space where you have a divider between where the public is and what's behind them, whether that's a kitchen or the bar, whatever. I like the, again, harkening to that upper-left middle part where you go around the bar, where everything's active. You have an open area, so a bit more inviting than just being walled off.
So thoughts around, can I, I like those comments. How would you or other people feel the concept on the upper-left where you have the four-top versus, say, the third top, third one on the right with more picnic table? When you think about, I don't know if anybody's been in improper city, but I, for this space, I like the concept of tables that fit eight, 12, 16 people, so a class group project can work there. And if you're going to go there with your family, you're probably going to be sitting with another family too. If we're going to call this community gathering, yeah, I mean, I think there's probably a four-top or two. But, you know, if you change the aperture on that top-left four-top, I think there's probably 15 four-tops in that, right? That's not what I see. I see picnic table type, you know, high-end picnic tables, but shared space. I mean, what are your thoughts around, which, thoughts around that?
I like both those ideas. I like, I like the mix. I like being forced and I like having the flexibility. They'd be coming with group of eight. You don't do a class project. You've got that there. I do like having enough small tables that if you do need that kind of private conversation, you can have it, but those are premium.
So there was an image on the youth and maker spaces slide that Kevin, to this kind of picnic table, so it's that image in the bottom right. You know, it's a student, and there's just kind of stools around. It's kind of hard to see here with lighting, but, you know, that had that kind of mix of, you know, wood and metal, kind of a modern picnic table essentially. You know, they could be made as long or as short as you want, right? They could fit four, they could fit 12. But I like the idea of almost like a beer garden kind of, you know, style where you're encouraging, you know, just like a ski lodge, right? You're sitting at a table with, you know, 10, 12 people. And, I mean, if we're trying to encourage a community gathering space, I mean, I like the idea that it's flexible enough that an entire Cub Scout troop can sit around and, you know, work on a project together, or a bunch of kids can work on their science project for school, or you've got a number of families that are just gathering there for a bite to eat after soccer practice. If we wanted to be inviting and something that is, you know, flexible enough. When I think about how many restaurants, it's really difficult to actually get, you know, more than two families together in, at a single restaurant because they just don't have the table space. So, you know, if we want to have something that's really inviting, I think we should definitely have tables that by design invite that sort of collaborative feel.
Yeah, but I think the comment I would make is we don't want it to just be picnic kind of tables because we do have a population in the community that's aging. Everybody isn't a family, so let's make sure that whatever we do, we also accommodate it so that a single person or a couple of people go in there and they don't feel like, you know, I feel like a fool sitting here at a big old table and taking it up when families could be in here. So we need to have the mix.
Agreed.
I just, I like the images that are presented here, and I mean, I like the way the discussion's going around, the seating and so on. I did want to bring up the idea that, you know, alcohol is going to require licensing, and there are some site challenges with this site regarding alcohol.
It's cool.
And I, so I just, I want the board to have that in the back of our minds and not just kind of make assumptions towards, you know, one way or the other. I just want us to be conscious of that.
All right, so we have two program options to discuss with you guys. More than anything, again, back to the conversation at the very beginning around program. How big are these spaces? What's the mix? And what are some of the strong, the major axes throughout the design that we're trying to create? So in this first option, we are proposing that the entry stays where it currently is or potentially wraps on all sides of this corner, depending on how we program it. The entry itself is the lobby, the lounge, the living room, really comfortable. A fireplace can be there. This is labeled as a senior center, but we can imagine this is just more a community flex space. Like as an example, if that was the elevated platform with something around it, it's a zone within a zone, a room within the room. And then we're really creating cross-sectional axes through the space for circulation. So when you go, there's also a step change when you hit this mark between the two spaces as well. So that's also going to program or help dictate where program is. But you can walk through what could be a gallery with local art or something as a transition into this restaurant lounge. We're just, let's imagine it as that lounge flexible space that we've been discussing. That's really at the heartbeat of the, of the program here. The ability to have a smaller, maybe bar component, whether it serves food or drink, is to be determined still. There's also a mezzanine in this building that we're trying to play up and build upon, and you'll see how that expands a little bit later. But a great thing about having this restaurant lounge in this heartbeat and along these axes is we can connect to an outdoor patio on this side of the building as well as at the top. So really creates more flow throughout the space and allows the movement to be pretty barrier-free. This is an existing wall that I think the addition came on to, so pretty easily this allows us to program as either a flexible community space as well. So maybe there's tables for makers, or it's a youth space that can be a senior space as well. And then back here is the addition. So we're starting to program smaller-scale items in there like restrooms or offices or back-of-house. And in this view, you can see how that starts to translate into maybe more literal space where if you walk into the front, this whole community zone is really flexible. It's open. There's a fireplace around. We imagined this idea of a coffee window or a beverage window so that you can access it from the inside or the outside. But in this plan, this could be a private partnership or operated in a different way. Stairs that separate the two spaces and then the stadium seats that align itself with the smaller elevated space. And then the bar component, open on both sides, but really capturing that heartbeat so that even if there's no one, not a food and beverage operation happening, you can easily sit there and work on your laptop. And then from this wall flexing into a community or maker space, and then more back-of-house programming. The other thing that we want to talk about is how, if this is open all the time, if it's staffed, if people can reserve it after hours, what are our operating hours? Do we want to create a space that can be, say, partitioned off and be accessed by a private party maybe during the evening without having to fully function the whole space itself? And I'll go into the vignettes, and then we can go back and talk over the plan. But this is an example of how with the fireplace and maybe that food and beverage counter, we can create a really warm and welcoming entry that then connects to the rest of the space with large signage or maybe art opportunities in the ceiling or in the walls. We love the volume of the space and just kind of reinforcing that with simple built-in elements. This is a vignette of how the stairs could work with the bar and the mezzanine. Again, the kind of bleacher concept here that you've seen in the reference imagery, two-sided bar that wraps the corner, and then a mezzanine space above can kind of be a study space if we want to, a quieter space, also a lounge space. And then underneath the bleachers in this location, you can see the bleachers kind of stacking here is where we've programmed and tucked away this idea of maybe a study or a library or a game space as well. And so I guess in this, as we talk about maybe public and private partnerships or what's operated by the town or what's operated by others, we have about 2,000 square feet plus some back-of-house dedicated to potential zones that could be leased by a food and beverage component. We also have, this one, about 1,000 square feet and another 1,000 square feet on the back that could potentially pretty easily be segmented off or used for an event or a meeting.
So I just have a couple of questions. So if you're, if you come in that front door, can you get to the building, to the rooms in the very back?
Yes.
You can? Okay, so that's part of the building that you don't normally get in. The, I like the idea that you're going to try and see if you can come up with a way to do something with that mezzanine. You know, at one point, I thought something about, well, maybe you could put the staff offices up there, and they're not, you know, your director has to be in a private space. But, you know, it would give the staff the opportunity to be able to look down, so, you know, but that was just a thought. The one comment I had was, you know, I don't think we need a standalone gallery. Personally, if there's a way, I would like to be able to see that art can be spread throughout the building as opposed to, you know, this is our little art gallery kind of thing because then people have an opportunity to experience it all over the place. The other thing that I wondered about is the area where you have the senior area, which I know you also said the stage. There's that sort of dramatic awning out on that west side of the building, and I wondered whether, I didn't see that anywhere, but was there a way that we could incorporate that into a patio space that people might be able, you know, to sit into? Because in reality, if people are, you know, they could cross from all the rest of Superior, they're probably going to cross at that mid-block area. So that would also be a part of the building that we might want to activate. So I worried about, you know, whether we could somehow use that cool awning area. I also wondered, you know, do we need two spaces for coffee and the restaurant bar? Could they be, you know, just because we got a small space here, could we come up with a space to be flexible enough that we wouldn't need two different? You know, if we have two different vendors, yes, we have to do it. But I'd be happier if there was a way that we could incorporate those into a single, you know, commercial entity if we could. You know, I have a little bit of concern about the outdoor patio in the southwest corner up near the community lounge. That is right next to a residential neighborhood, and so I have a little bit concerned about noise that might occur there, after-hours in particular. You know, I do happen to know some of the people that live on that corner, and they have already expressed concern about noise. So that corner for a patio that might be used late into the evening, you know, if it's 10 o'clock, fine. But if it's going to be used later, that, you know, for me, it's more practical to put a patio on the other corner because it's not backing right up to residences. Of the two designs, I tell you, the first one I didn't like as much. It felt very boxy. Their second one felt more like the, it was more the community space that we wanted to create. So, I don't know, that just felt a little, it felt a little square for me.
I'm curious as to your thoughts on labeling or not labeling something library. I mean, I know we've had discussions about library being, you know, a different concept than books on shelves. I get that, but we've put a lot of labels on things here, but in nowhere is the concept of library space. And maybe it fits within one of these, but to me, it feels like we're kind of leaning heavily on restaurant-bar versus library, the word library. My other comment is that you've got restaurant, restrooms on glass and back-of-house things on glass or on the outside. And I would, to the extent you can, pull those in and have things that, where people are spending more time, you know, on the outside by glass instead of, instead of on the interior.
Yeah, actually, Clint brings up a really good point. One of the, one of the challenges we have with the library, not, not saying the geography, it's in Louisville, it's space for programming. You know, when we look at the Louisville library, you know, one of the most popular activities is taught, reading with little kids, and it takes up a tremendous amount of space. I'm trying to wrap my head around how we could even do that, you know, here. What is the space that we would use for that? That's not going to intrude upon, you know, some of the other programming already. Because that is, you know, that sort of read-to-your-kids thing is one of the single biggest challenges parents have expressed, you know, because they have to go to Louisville for that as a whole. I don't want to dedicate, you know, space to that, you know, 100%, dedicated space that's used one day every other week. But, you know, when we think about the future of the library, you know, reading still happens. And how do you, how do you do that in this space? And then, you know, as I looked at the two different options, you wanted to, I noticed the senior center's all the way on one side and the youth center's on the other side. And I don't know if that was by design or just by where it fit. Because, you know, with the conversation we had earlier, I do see that there's, I used Louisville again as an example there. I do see that there's some overlap. There's some common, you know, obviously, you know, I've got grandparents in town. I got little kids in town. They hang out. They're okay hanging out. They also want their own separate space. But there's common things that they'll, they both play pool and stuff like that. You know, how do you potentially intermingle or create the intergenerational so they're not at two different opposite ends of the building? And then I'm just going to go back to my point about coffee, and it's not that I'm against coffee. Just get that straight. It's just, I hate coffee. No, I love coffee. It's the triple P, the public-private partnership in terms of, I personally don't want this town staffing a coffee bar. I want to make sure that there's somebody out there, maybe it's Starbucks, maybe it's somebody else. somebody else that can come in and that we, we think about that. And I think as Sandy said, is if it's a combined bar that does both in some way, shape or form, that potentially, you know, decreases the amount of real estate that we need dedicated for that. So, and then one last question. With the exception of the upper left corner, but you, all the patio spaces on the, on the east side, was that by design in terms of the noise or is that just, was there any other reason?
Yeah, a little bit of both. Because this area right here is the addition, it doesn't have the volume, it doesn't have the existing garage doors as, as much as the side does. So with the volume and with those openings that we want to repurpose, we felt like that was a great way to overflow to a patio that food trucks can pull into or something like that.
Thanks.
So I want to talk about the, just the concept. So I do, so I recognize, I appreciate what Clint said around kind of the hurdles associated with this space having alcohol and there are hurdles and if you haven't talked to Kendra, you should. I think it is important for a bar to be separate from a coffee shop and I think so for a couple of different reasons. Number one, just as a parent, I'm perfectly comfortable with my kid, whether or not it's a pre-teen or a teen or as they get older, spending time at a coffee shop, not necessarily comfortable spending time, hopefully this will, you know, I don't see this ever serving, you know, a lot of spirits and it's not gonna be dark, but there are, there is alcohol and sometimes kids and alcohol or bad mixture. So I think it should be different because there should be different space between where a teen can get or a, or a pre-teen can get a non-alcoholic beverage and where adults may choose to have alcoholic beverages. And the reality is kids study until, you know, 10 o'clock at night or later on group projects. This would be a great place for them to meet at a group project. I don't, you know, I see the, you know, the tables for the group projects being close to the coffee area and not next to the bar area. And so I get a little uneasy about that. So I, I kind of like, and it also just disperses the crowd, right? People that, I can't say the word, is it kombucha? Am I saying that right?
Kombucha.
Kombucha, you know, which is what people, you know, they spend $8 for, you know, it's great, you know, hopefully somebody will be successful there. But yeah, I mean, let's keep that. My view is for it to be a little bit separate. Which is the high level question. When I started thinking about the work that would be done, I agree with Sandy. So you've got, you know, you have some, you, you have neighbors up, you know, to the, you know, in, in that area, you know, around the sketch plan there, right? And so, but you have Colton. I kind of thought that the most active space would be where you have the gallery and that would be the opportunity for kind of the more outdoor space, you know, basically outside the coffee and more the front of the building. Can you talk a little bit about, and I, and I'm also confused on, you know, I didn't, I haven't really thought about kind of the sun study, which I know was on a previous slide there. Which is important for Colorado because if you want somebody sitting outside on a nice day in February, you know, they could do so, even if it's the weather, if it's sunny, but if it's shady, they're just not going outside. So anyway, can you talk to me a little bit about why you chose that outdoor space kind of on the bottom left on kind of the Starbucks side and, you know, the potential lounge area on the, on the top instead of kind of the front of the building, front of the gallery?
So I think the term gallery in our mind is, is very broad in the sense that it's our entry, it's where people come and start to pick their path. We would imagine this being furnished, a lot like the reference imagery that we saw. So with like casual seating, more so than maybe more tabletop seating that could start to furnish the rest of the space. Our thought though, just in terms of getting to all of the other program components, we really wanted to create a center that was open, as open as possible so that, one, that space can be really flexible in how we use it. So the Boy Scouts can do a project on a table or it can be a one person studying, like all of that can be really flexible if it's open. And then we put the rooms around the perimeter to allow for that kind of funnel to happen naturally in spaces that are currently blocked off without building a lot of walls. So whether or not we continue to wrap kind of outdoor space around and we also agree that this is a great opportunity to spill out or that could be bike parking like we mentioned or a patio space for a meeting that might happen here. But more than, I think for the most part, just because of the orientation of the building, we felt like the, the largest gathering space wanted to be where there was the most amount of physical real estate.
I do, so you've mentioned a couple of times, you don't know if this building's gonna be open all the time or, or not. I, I don't, I personally have never thought about this building, any part of the building being open all the time. I do see a major part of the building being, having hours, and this is where things might get a little complex and maybe it's just not doable, but I think there are parts, you know, for example, the coffee gallery area in this rendering would be open a lot more than other areas, you know? So if there is, for example, a staffed library where, you know, I think Clint's asking good questions about we're, you know, we're avoiding the word library, maybe that doesn't, you know, this whole, you, you could view all 15,000 square feet as a library effectively, but the reality of it is a subset of this will be the lending element of the library, whether or not it's lending books or lending tools or to Lars, good idea, lending athletic equipment or sports equipment. I think those are all good ideas, but that's not something that we're gonna, you know, I'd imagine the coffee shops open at 6:00 AM, the library's not gonna be open at 6:00 AM. So I think, I was starting to reach because I wonder if I have a, right. So in this rendering, thank you, you knew what I was going for. So in this rendering, you know. Right, there we go. So in this rendering, right, there's kind of a wall here and then maybe there's a separate wall so somebody was, you know, whatever this flex community area is, you know, if this was, you know, the traditional part of the library, the lending part of the library, one of the key things, you know, we have a place right here where you could return your, your books and they go back to Louisville. I would see this, obviously, obviously, at a minimum, having a place where books could be returned, but ideally it is also study areas. I like the idea of the conference rooms. I think Sandy's exactly right. I, I don't like walled off conference rooms where people don't know what's going behind, going on behind closed doors, both because occasionally with teens, you don't want that and second, I think you, you want to know, you want to see the activity behind that, that closed glass wall, so I think that's good. So in this rendering anyway, the point is, I, I would expect this, you know, this is sort of a wall, there's an entry and this, you know, this gate or whatever comes down and the bar area is not, not available and then this allows, you know, the, the Wednesday morning kids that are, you know, on a late start day, this is where they're gathering and there's no risk that they're coming anywhere near the bar.
So just a, a question on this, you know, one of the things we have an issue with in town is community meeting space. It feels like there's a lot of sort of flexible space, but there's not, I don't have a good sense, I'm not saying there isn't, a good sense of, you know, where do the Boy Scouts have a meeting, where, you know, is that in this community flex space? Because this is actually a huge problem in this town. And when we did the indoor space study back in 2014, a big reason that happened was because there were groups of people who were coming to us about community meeting space. And, and I don't mean having a meeting in the, in the midst of a room, they want small rooms where you might get 20 people. And so I really want to, is that, you know, you've got the stuff here on this, on this wall on the far side, you know, what, what's the vision there? Is the vision that it would be one big room and a bunch of little rooms or, just give me a sense of what you're thinking about there?
I think that's where, when we started, we really focused on what's the program because it really can be whatever the community requires it to be and you have those zones that we're starting to identify. And what we're hearing very loud is flexibility but also meeting spaces. So I think our next iteration will start to identify more specifically where those parts and pieces will come in and where people can do the different activities they need to.
And I think related to that, I think Kevin hit a good, I mean, my personal vision, I saw the, the gallery side of the building because A, it's good looking, you know, B, it faces out on sort of the, toward our parks and, you know, it aligns with our parks. To me, that's the active side of the building and sort of protecting the residents who live in the Summit at Rock Creek, which, yes, it's up where it says sketch plan, but it's also this whole back wall where you see community and flex community, there are people's houses who are right there. And so I like that being a less active, you know, if it's meetings, that's great because that's a little bit quieter use that would keep it isolated or a little bit more protected from the folks who, who live in those houses. And so for me, if you put the sort of more active outdoor area more toward Colton Road, it will be probably more amenable to the people who live in the summit. And I happen to know the president of the Summit at Rock Creek, HOA, is here tonight, so I'm sure he's listening carefully because he'll want to be able to have some communication with the residents up there too.
I did want to add one thing I didn't say before. I really like the stadium seating and the alignment towards the stage. Like I'm a big fan of the stadium seating for a lot of the reasons I think Kevin had said earlier and then orienting, you know, a slightly elevated space that could be used as a stage, I think it just makes a tremendous amount of sense.
One, one additional thought, which I hadn't really thought about until, you know, Kevin raised it up about the late start Wednesdays. So we have, you know, one of our, our schools has, right now at least, that's what BVSD is doing, they, they have delayed starts on Wednesdays, right? So as a result, if you go to the Starbucks that's right next to this building on Wednesday morning between 7:45 and 9:15, good luck. You're, it's, it's, it's just overrun because it's the only place to go, right? So, I mean, to the extent that we're going to be phasing the operations of this facility and encouraging, you know, kind of like, say, the, the right side of this picture where the coffee side to open up, that would seem to also be a natural place to put the activities for, you know, the non-study aspect of it, like the game room, the pool tables, things like that. So, so you could phase it in, in a same area where we wouldn't necessarily open up the entire building at once. Alternatively, if we want to open up the entire building and kind of encourage people to go and go exploring, that's, that's a possibility as well. It's just, it's a different discussion, so we just need to be mindful of how it would be used because I think in the morning, you're probably gonna have more activity, you know, at the front of the house versus the rest of the building.
Right, but, right, yeah, I agree. And then, but at the same, I mean, so many of us, I mean, I'm really excited for the kind of community, for members of the community and we've also promised that folks will be able to provide public comment, but one of the things that, you know, I work, when I'm not traveling, I, I work from home and it's, you know, hard to sit by yourself for 10 hours a day, you know? So it's nice, just, I, I absolutely would be at this almost every day, assuming I wasn't traveling by 10 or 11 AM for a few hours, so. That's the other, I'm not sure if that data point was on there, but sort of highly connected, like whatever, there needs to be plugs on every table and, you know, high performing wifi and all that great stuff, which we sure is, table stakes at this point.
Well, let me throw something out from architectural standpoint. So the front, what we're calling a gallery, and it isn't gonna be a museum gallery. It really is a place to gather and there's artwork there, could be traveling, show, not traveling, but people's.
Right.
Show and whatever, but that's the glorious space of that and you come in, you should be impressed and this is really a community that's thinking about me and all that. And I'm not sure, I mean, we could enter somewhere, you want to come in and have all these foosball tables. I'm, I'm not saying what you're saying is wrong, but it was sort of meant to this, okay, here's the expression of our community here. And you know, it's, it's a pretty nice space and we can really play up and figure out what activities could go there. And as you can see, you can arrange the furniture, they have separate rooms or open it all up and have a, have something going on there. So that sort of was kind of our thought. Now I had thought at one time that that little green space, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, and we got the guy in the audience who was gonna agree with you totally and hopefully vote for you, but that little green space with that community area, that's sort of a private little space. And I don't know, I mean, that's probably not the best place to put kids, but you actually have a little playground area which you could control and all that. We've got that little green space. So how can we make the most of that, but not at nighttime? We don't want teenagers there who are, you know, at 10 o'clock still kind of wandering around and making more noise than they should. Believe it or not, they'll probably play beer pong even if you don't even allow it, you know how that works. So, but that's sort of how we wanted that and the place is supposed to flow through. I think the biggest thing is we put bar on that thing too big. And that's not what we had in mind. Of course, a lot of these things are for adults that we do and so the bar is a big thing, but that's to be downplayed. And I agree with it, it's about, bar is sort of kind of a little place, people have express, they would like to come here and be able to have a glass of wine or something like that, but it's not a bar. You just kind of, kind of get that, sit on the corner on the side while the kids are over there and they're listening to their music or they're playing their games and all that. So I think that's what we want to do. But I'd like to keep that front space, not chopped up or something like that or have full of foosball tables. It seems like it's inappropriate for the town not to have some glorious space that people come into. It'll be impressive, it'll be nice, it'll be a showcase, so.
Yeah, and my, my suggestion wasn't necessarily, and, and I agree with that. I mean, I, I think you need to, to work with the space that you have and, and, and keep that kind of front and center with the design process because we want to design to the building as it's currently configured. It's, it was just really, I thought Kevin raised a good point and, you know, if we're going to, you know, build this in a way that's, you know, flexible in terms of how it's gonna function.
Yeah.
We need to be mindful of what unique aspects of our community kind of being, are gonna activate it at certain points in time and if, if there's any opportunities or, or challenges that are caused as a result of that. And one of those is late start Wednesdays that we have currently. Now BVSD could do away with that and then all of a sudden we don't have late start Wednesdays anymore and it's, and it's not really something that we're gonna be designing towards, but you know, to the extent that we right now, we have like a big group of kids who are looking for a place to go, we're currently, you know, overpopulating this, this Starbucks. If we're gonna be encouraging them to come here, we want to make sure that they can actually take advantage of the, all the teen amenities that we're trying to activate.
Oh yeah, no, we totally, totally get that.
So I have two, I have two specific requests. Number one, the first is easy, the second is hard. I don't want to see the word bar when this rolls out to the community, right? And I don't want to hide the fact that I want this to be adult, but I think the word bar sort of means something and people that grew up in, I grew up in New York, you know, it means sort of, it's dark and it's spook, that's not, you know, whether or not it's changed to tasting room and, or, or pub area, I don't know, but some, some, some phrase or word that's gonna be kind of less of a lightning rod, but also clear that signifies your idea and the intent here, which is there will be adult beverages. I don't want people to be surprised that there are gonna be adult beverages, but it's not a bar in the same way that there's a bar. Like Louisville has 15 places you can get a drink, they have one bar, right? And I think you guys know, everybody knows what I'm talking about presumably right now, right? This is gonna be a place where you can get a drink, but it's not a bar. Number one.
That's an easy one.
That's the easy one. The second one, this whole area is, this, the concept to me of this future library, this community gathering area, this whole space is a gathering area. And because it's, it's, you know, there's boxes and the next one doesn't have boxes, there's more sort of, there's, you know, the curves are a little bit different, you know, fewer right angles, but it's still kind of chunked up. But I do, you know, the idea that somebody, and it's, you know, I don't think we'll ever have the library, the quantity of actual hard books that maybe Louisville will have, but it does, but I do want somebody to be able to take something from a library and if they want to walk it to the other side and, and sit for four hours and read that book or read the magazine, have at it, right? So going from one end of the building to the other and the word, the word library doesn't exist here. So taking the concepts of a library and/or a community and somehow indicating that on the entire template, not with, you know, not with a box, but somehow through. that on the entire template, not with, you know, not with a box, but somehow throughout, that message is sort of shared that this is a community area for sharing and learning and organizing. I don't know, am I being crazy here? But that's, I don't know how to articulate it, but, you know, it looks, oh, you know, the way I look at this now, it's, here's where you get your coffee, here's where the Parks and Rec office is, here's the senior center, here's the community room. It's like, no, 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 that's not what this is.
No, no, and that's not our intent.
And I think what I'm gathering, too, like, this, this is the library that we had initially imagined, and that might be make, like, we want this to be bigger than just a small program chunk that's library. We want it to be kind of seamless throughout.
Right. And, and you're right, we do libraries and, and books. There's a whole debate between librarians, whether should we have books or not books or books. So that's, that could take hours to explain. But basically, we really need to create small intimate spaces where you can do that and open up your laptop or get on a computer and read a book and all that. And that's sort of what we're trying to show here, but you're right. If we just make those spaces where you can have a little bit of intimacy to read your book and to get away from it, that's what we'll be looking for. And it doesn't have to be in that box. We're not going to do that.
The third element that I'd like you to research, that, so the first one, remember, I asked Matt to get you in touch with our, both Happy City as well as our business development consultant, you guys should connect. Number two, that, and it sounds like this will be, since you guys are, you design libraries, sort of the, the library of the future. And three, I'd like you to either sit with the Louisville library, or at least get a read out from Louisville library, sort of what they are missing.
Okay.
Because I do see this as an extension of what Louisville, and they've been a fantastic partner for us over the last eight years, or ten years, twelve years now. I want now to be an extension for them, right? They have serviced our community. I want to be able to service the Louisville community. So the same way, I think what I've heard previously is they're missing, they don't have enough conference rooms, frankly. And so, you know, conference rooms that are available as part of the library function. So that's the third element there.
Okay. And, and I like your idea that the conference room is readily seen and all that. So when you're there, oh, there's a room, I know it's over there, we can use it. If it's not, you know, you have to peek in the door and all that. So having it open, but yet at the same time be able to close off is very important to attract people to come and say, all right, there's a great place over there.
Right.
Louisville's library director.
Yep, yep, I see that.
So if you want to ride back with us to Denver.
I've got another ask similar to Kevin's, and, and he talked about the idea of getting rid of the, the title bar in there. I, I'd like to take the next step of, of even, when we can show imagery and are getting feedback from the community, let's actually not even leave it up to people's imaginations and help them jump to that next step. So in that stadium seating, I mean, right now, in, in this layout, we see that that's right next to, quote, the bar, and it's hard to imagine that as something other than where alcohol might be used. But I mean, to Neil's point, this is a excellent place to take gather kids, to be able to read to them, to be able to get that. And, and to be able to identify that this is going to be a clean, nice space, that, that, that this bar area does not define the space, that I think that's going to be important. And then the, the second piece that I, I want to try to highlight that is there when we look closely at these, but I think is really a selling point here, is, is the cool, unique spaces in, in this area that we don't have in other buildings. So for instance, obviously, it's the, the stadium seating, but secondarily, it's that upper, that upper space. That's, that's a hidden gem. That, that library behind, that's a hidden gem. And we're gonna have all these little cool nooks and crannies that are unique, that that's going to be a real draw to people. And I think the teens especially, that's going to be a, something that they'll find the cool space, they're gonna find what they want. And that's, that's something I like to come through in the community outreach.
Okay, emphasize that, right. Yeah, this, this says so much more than the little circles, and it's only natural to think that there's a wall around it and all of that. So we gotta soften that up a little somehow, yeah. Do we want to discuss the?
Yep.
Second point?
And I'm sure a lot of our comments will be very similar, but the biggest difference, we'll just stick right here, in our perspective is, one, how are we entering? And in contrast to maybe this first option, where if you walk in the front, you can really see all the way through, this gray area is totally open, this coffee, word nook is lower than the full ceiling, so you can really see all the way through it. This is a little bit more engaging in the journey, and it's more meandering, there's more of a sense of discovery. If you come in the front, you might not necessarily be able to see everything that happens on the other side, but it's still open, and you, you go along the journey to maybe meeting rooms or other maker spaces or library spaces, but it's a little bit more of a meandering experience.
Anybody for meandering?
We have, this is a vignette at our kind of multi-vendor cafe, we're calling it. So in the sense that we have multiple people that were trying to maybe do beverages or food, this is allowing two things to happen at that one time, or maybe it's two food or two drink or whatever that is, but it's, we're calling it this multi-vendor cafe. And then this is an example of how we can start to utilize some of this flex space for makers or larger meetings where the garage doors can open. We've repurposed some of the existing infrastructure into light poles or light fixtures, and then these tables are just really flexible.
So in this, so what is, so.
Go ahead.
What exact, where, where, so the picture on slide, the next slide, I guess, the twenty-nine? No, the next one. So what am I looking at here?
This would be a view of this zone right here. Yeah, that back addition with those garage bas, there's ramps in it as well.
I was gonna say, it's the most interesting use of oil barrels that I've seen. All right. Of the two concepts, I actually happen to like this one better. The flow, I think, just tends to lend itself more to just an open kind of meander across the space. The, the boxes on the other one kind of felt more, a little more rigid. I mean, that just might be me. I, we did lose the, the stadium seating, so maybe there's a way to still work that in. I don't know. But I do, I do kind of like this thought for kind of unlocking a lot of the, the larger space for the aggregate people, so you don't just go to your little area and your little nook and stay there. This kind of invites you to, to wander.
That's a, yeah, I hear you. Do you feel like in this second design, that you're losing the grandness of the, the front room, the gallery, what you refer to as the gallery?
I do in how it's laid out. Right now, I think if we're starting to hear that that is Joe's glorious space, but we like the idea of a wandering experience, then there's a way to marry both of those. But I do think this, right now, could start to feel a little bit more segmented and not necessarily celebrate that grand space.
So to me, when I think about industrial, I think about big open spaces and not walls, but literally, you know, the, you know, there, there is, there's an area at the Rayback that, you know, I know you guys did, right, where there's chain link fence that's just closed for when it's not open for a party. It's, it makes the space feel bigger. I, my preference is kind of the concept of the first one, where you're almost seen all the way through, recognizing that we're gonna have to chunk it up a little bit, just because we cannot, the, the hours of the, let's just, let's just assume for a minute, the hours of the coffee shop, the gathering area are six AM to ten PM. I don't know what they are, but let's assume for a minute that people can come and put their feet up and sit between those hours. There's just no way we could have all fifteen thousand square feet open for that period of time. And so I kind of like the idea of the openness of that first area where you can kind of almost see all the way through, the spine concept that you talk through. And I also do not want to compromise the grandness of that room. And as silly as it is, that, you know, that compass that's on the floor, we got to find a way to sort of keep that compass, you know, I love that, so.
So my overall preferences towards, uh, vision number one as well. I, I, I think that lends itself a bit more to the community aspect. It keeps, uh, it keeps the community together rather than as seg, as segmented as it is. I think there'll be natural segmentation. It's going to be quieter up near the, the gallery. I think it gets noisier and, and a bit more full volume voices towards the back. I will say that there, there are aspects of the, of the second piece that I really like, though. So if we're able to, to merge some things together, I think that's valuable. I think that the, the vignette of the communal area, I, I think that's a, a great glorious space. And I think that's kind of what, at least, what I, I was picturing when we're talking about the large tables, where we're talking about being able to, like a ski resort type, type room, where you've got these long big tables that, that bring people together. Looking at the actual titles, so the prior slide to this, I think I like the, the length of the outdoor patio a bit more. Again, it's a, an outdoor patio is different to everybody. I don't know exactly what this outdoor patio looks like or means, but again, I, something that can be opened up and, and has something for everybody. So I, I don't know how familiar you guys are with the Louisville area, but there's a, a nice little dual commercial space down there of Sweet Cow and Lucky Pie, where in front of that building, they've got a turf area, it's got a community garden, it's got, it's an active, very, very, very active area, and it, it's inviting for families. I, I don't know that something, but this would have to be that entire space, but if we can work that in, I think maybe you talked about in the first vision, that maybe that would be that. I mean, as long as there's, we're starting to see those, I, I just invoke that vision a bit more with the second drawing than the first one, but I think that'd be valuable.
One thing we haven't talked about, that it's on there, so I'd like to at least, I guess, to touch on a little bit, is these food truck zones. So can you talk a little bit about that and, and how that works, and where people go in and out, and just, just what the vision is? I don't know if we're all picturing the same thing with that.
Yeah, and I think we'll need to define it more when we start to study parking and landscape and islands and where the natural circulations are, so that doesn't disrupt people coming to visit this. But what we would imagine is providing a space, ideally adjacent to an outdoor space and a restaurant, that one to four food trucks can park, we have the infrastructure for them to plug in, and they can easily, our residents can easily get food and then hop into either the lounge space or stay outside.
Can we, um, can you go to the first slide, just with the site overview? Or one of the early slides, you know? I think, kind of borrow your laser pointer, bang it first. So. So. I do think as we roll this out to the community, this is such a big area. We cannot, I mean, there's so much land that's, I mean, this building compared to the land is actually a pretty small building. It's a huge building, but compared to the land. We're not going to extend the building for, you know, we've, I, I don't think, I don't, I haven't heard a single board member say we should add five thousand square feet to this building, right? So I don't think there's any appetite for doing that. But there is a lot of available outdoor space, and we are in Colorado. Your presentation is fantastic. I know we're going to iterate on this. I do think that as we bring this to the community in the next version, I think we need to think more about just have a vignette or something that shows how we're leveraging the outdoor space and the fact this is Colorado. And we are, you know, the advantage over, I mean, even when you, you know, one of the, I don't know if it made the design inspirations, but out of St. Louis, there's a restaurant, I think it's St. Louis, called Chicken and Pickle, right? Where, and when you go on their website, you know, it is a very, and it's a restaurant, right? They're serving fried chicken. We're not going to serve fried chicken, but they're also, you know, the, the, their visuals leverage so much of the outdoor space in terms of, you know, bag toss and, so I think we need to do a little bit more of that. Second, I do think we need to be really clear about the traffic flow. There is a school right here. I, I don't know how I feel about cars, about increasing, you know, hundreds of cars per day zipping down here. I really like the cars coming this way, and this really being a food truck area with, you know, people out, you know, people sitting outside. And I think Ken's thought is, is really smart, that, you know, we should be leveraging this outdoor space, and maybe the outdoor space in front of Colton, to the extent where we can. And the flow of traffic is behind the building, and the parking is, you know, all in here. There's also this space we need to talk about, but probably not today. And the flow of traffic is not this way.
Yeah, that seems the most logical there. And if we do, we can create the green space and the food truck zone there, and that's pretty good, and the noise is concentrated away from the neighborhood on that side and all that. It's, it's a little bit, in my mind, what we do along Colton Road and all that. It'd be nice to have more of a sidewalk cafe aspect to that, but I'm not sure how we quite pull that off, and it's separated from the street quite a bit.
It is and it isn't, right? There's actually a really nice bridge that comes across this.
Oh, okay.
And so it's separated, there's a sidewalk, but, you know, there's actually a little pedestrian, wooden pedestrian bridge that comes across it. I mean, it's actually, aesthetically, it's, 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 it's pretty cool what I'm feeling there. But the idea that, you know, this is a place, again, you know, not unlike Rayback, where there's, you know, it is, you know, I don't want dogs inside the building, but if somebody has walked their dog and they want to stop for a cup of coffee, this is a place where you could sit outside with your dog and have a cup of coffee and chat with some neighbors. So, and, you know, what Starbucks has is a couple, you know, cruddy tables and some uncareful chairs. That's not what we're gonna have. You know, ours is gonna be, you know, you started the presentation with you're gonna activate the space. We want the outdoors activated as well.
And though I take my dog, go to the Starbucks, get my coffee, and then go to the community and sit outside and enjoy it, right?
It, it's a good point, though, because, you know, we've got the building, obviously, but then there is a lot of paved area out there, because, I mean, obviously, it was a car dealership, they needed to park cars there. We probably don't need to park as many cars there, so we have the opportunities to park, you know, food trucks, but also to, you know, activate and cannibalize, frankly, some of that paved area, you know, whether it's, you know, outdoor community gardens. You know, there's a, a really cool restaurant down in, in, off of Colfax down in downtown, owned by the Stevens folks, Ace.
I've been there, I've heard it's on my list, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's like a ping pong restaurant and Korean barbecue. So interesting merge of, of different things there. But, you know, they, in addition to having, you know, a big space indoors where they have ping pong tables, they also have outdoor ping pong tables. And so when the weather's nice, you know, you can play on these concrete, you know, ping pong tables that are outside. So, you know, activating, and that's the same thing with, you know, Impossible City, right?
Improv.
Improv, improv.
Improv.
Improv, yeah. Yeah, improper city. They have, you know, and, and same thing with Ken's, Ken's point about Lucky Pie and, and Sweet Cow with the, the turf area there, that, you know, you're always gonna have kids running around there and have, you know, cornhole and, and, you know, various activities to, to just encourage people to, to gather both inside and out. And if we focus all the attention to the inside of the building, I think we're gonna be missing an opportunity here to, to just, you know, really grow the, the usefulness of this property that.
I think for me, it's, it's, it's our missed opportunity, but I'm, I'm also just thinking about kind of the next phase. It's like, I'm obviously so excited about this, but I also want, the, the community is just unaware of this. And so I want them to sort of share our passion and see, see the idea here and be inspired. Okay, this isn't just gonna be Okay, this isn't just going to be, you know, maker space where your teen is going to hang out on Wednesday morning, but this is also, you know, where if you're a work from home person, this is where you'll be able to work from home. This is, you know, I struggle just meetings, right? I mean, I, I would happily pay a couple hundred bucks to get a conference room for an hour, right? And I think there's a lot of people that are not unlike me who are looking for a private place to meet. And I think there's also, so there's some commercialized aspect to that as well. So.
Just on this slide with the next version, we have a mid-block crossing here now. So for pedestrians getting through here, you don't have to go all the way around. You just go straight through.
Yeah, if you could add that.
Definitely a recent addition that I think is going to help with the space.
Yeah, we realize that the access to the space, anything we can do to improve it and to get people there is going to be very beneficial. No, no, I like that. I like the zones we have. And of course, we have more than enough parking. And we have to know kind of what use is. I don't know how the planning department would look upon this, but I can't believe that we don't have at least triple the parking we're going to be required to do. So what we do with all that land and stuff, some of it's pretty remote. And so I'm not sure we need to develop that, but are there trade offs or whatever they can do for that? So, okay. Well, we've learned a lot. Thank you so much. And so I guess our next step is start to clean this up.
I'd like to offer an opportunity for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For those that would like to make comment. And then maybe we can have a kind of a final wrap up with board members of just kind of summarize our thoughts and try to clarify as much as we can for you.
Thank you.
At this time, if anyone in the public would like to make comment, we'd welcome any public comment. Anyone?
So I'm Rich Walker at Summit at Rock Creek. And we have this big belt that runs along the back there that we're looking for some potential possibility of doing something with in conjunction with the town. So I just wanted to throw that out there. The, it's the area that they used to park cars on.
Yep.
I'm not sure that we want to park cars up there, but if we can think of something useful or interesting we could do with that, that would be great. And the only other question I have, which is just a personal question, what were you doing with the lifts that you used to do with the car servicing?
We have sold, I think, majority of those. It's on, we've sold the majority of those.
Oh, okay. And somebody's taken them out of there or something. Oh, okay. Interesting. Well, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Any additional public comment?
Hello, my name is Gorgi Hanyan. I live in Rock Creek, it's basically right up there. So I'm familiar with the corner. I've never actually visited the side of the Land Rover dealerships. I would never go there. But I think maybe it would be helpful for like whatever the next meeting or gathering will be, is to maybe do it in that space. So people can actually see what it's like and, you know, have a sense of, because looking at the images, there's, there was a few of the kind of the images from inside, but you don't really grasp how one space leads to another and how that garage connects to the gallery space. But, you know, I think that would be a helpful thing to understand the plans better.
Okay, thanks for the comment. Any additional public comment? All right, and this is, we'll definitely have more engagement with the public and more opportunity for public to get engaged. This is the purpose of tonight is really just to provide feedback to our architect team and let them know of just kind of our board's initial reaction. So I think at this time, it'd be great for board members to kind of summarize thoughts on what they heard tonight or what we heard tonight and provide additional feedback for next steps. So I'll go first. I usually go last, but I'll go first tonight. So to me, I want this space to check off as many boxes as possible for needs that the community has identified as lacking. And to me, those are meeting, gathering space, which would include teen and senior space, co-working space, parks and rec office space and library. To me, I'm not personally as excited about the words restaurant, bar. Coffee's kind of a maybe, but it's, to me, it's going to be, I'm going to have to really be convinced that the town as superior, a governmental entity needs to be in the restaurant bar business. I like the concept of food trucks. I like the concept of gathering for a drink. But I just am not totally convinced that the town needs to be in that business of providing that space of, of serving beverages, so alcoholic beverages. So those are my thoughts. Others?
I'll go.
So first off, I just want to say thank you to Oz. You guys, you put together some really beautiful slides here. I think it's gotten us all thinking about the possibilities of, you know, what you could actually do with a building like this. It is a cool building. It has a lot of potential. And now it's a question of executing on its potential, you know, with a buy-in from the community to make sure that it's as inviting a place as we can possibly make it. And I think that, you know, when, when it comes down to, I agree with Clint in terms of, you know, checking off, you know, certain boxes. But I think, you know, at the forefront of that discussion, what I really want us to think about is how can we make this be? Because, you know, you, you can provide co-working space and study space and conference rooms and teen space, library services in any sort of building, right? Any sort of environment. But what we really want to do here is make this as inviting as possible. So it's a success. So, you know, at the forefront of what we're doing here is, I think what we're trying to do is attract the community to a central location as often as possible. So we can really build the community. And that, that will drive the success of all the amenities that we have within it. Obviously, we need the amenities to attract people to come. But the more people who come, the more success we'll have with all the amenities. So I, I do think that part of gathering is the ability to get a bite to eat and to get a drink. I think that that's just kind of central to gathering spaces in general. But I agree that, you know, co-working spaces, library spaces, library services, meeting rooms, an open concept that is flexible, that is really inviting and energetic is something that really is, in my mind, just really attractive about the presentation that you're putting here. I think generally speaking, I like the, the concept of option one probably a little better. I'm a little, I mean, I think the stadium seating aspect of it is, is interesting. But that's one of those aspects of, of a design that, you know, could be the best part of the design. It could also be, you know, a part that ends up breaking up the flow and not being actually used. I want to make sure that it's implemented appropriately because we don't want to just build something that's really cool looking that ends up, well, if we didn't have that there, we could have done a bunch of different things. So, but I, I kind of defer to your expertise as architects in that regard. But, you know, all, all things considered, I think that this is a great first step. I'm really interested in seeing, you know, what the community thinks when we have our meetings with them as we continue to iterate going forward. But yeah, agreeing with Clint, you know, co-working services, library services, community meeting space, you know, study rooms, conference rooms, teen and senior space. Those are all central aspects of this. I don't necessarily care the same about putting parks and rec necessarily in this building. I guess we could, but we don't necessarily need to. But I think to activate all of those aspects of the plan, I think we're going to need to have some food and beverage component of it. But I agree, I don't want the town to be in the, in the business of running a restaurant or a bar. But I think that that's something that we could partner with a third party to facilitate that aspect of it. But thank you.
I, I think this was, this was a lot of fun just going through this. You know, I think one of the challenges we've always had is, you know, 2014, we have a very robust survey that, you know, a lot of folks here participated in. And we got, you know, we got a long list of everything that we want. Fitness center is the first thing on the list, which is obviously not going to work here. But you guys have ticked off a number of the things that were on that list. And I really want to tie back to that 2014 survey as much as possible in the sense that we, we capture what it is that the community wanted. You know, I think of course, another piece of it here is we've never had a building. And this building allows us to create some new uses that no one would have dreamed of in 2014. I think the engagement is going to be a critical component going forward of, you know, layering in what people have said that they want, you know, five years ago, relative to what's capable, what the building is possible of delivering. And I think going through that process, you know, and what I've already seen right now is there's some new opportunities that I never even would have thought of before that, you know, this, this space and some of the ideas that you laid out really work well in terms of delivering. But, you know, the challenge ultimately for you guys, and I don't, I'm not going to shortchange it. That means designed by committee doesn't work. So, you know, what I really want is, you know, a good robust list of, hey, here's the things that we can do, here's what it's going to cost. Here's the things that you guys also said you want that is going to go above the budget. Or, you know, you need to, you, the board, need to sort of mix and match to make it work within the envelope of 2020 and maybe 2021, 2022. Here's the other things that you can add on to this space. Because the risk is when we, when we've done this before with the community, and we tried this just a year and a half ago, we get a list of everything under the sun that we want in this space and it's just not possible. You know, we just need to draw that line on here's what's possible within the envelope that you have. Here's what ticks off the most boxes relative to what the community has said. And for these other things that may, may express, may have an expressed interest, you could do them later and here's what it could look like in the future. But otherwise, I think this is a fantastic, great first step. I'm excited about, you know, what this can do for the community and what we're going to have, you know, at the end of the process. Thank you.
So I think you'll probably hear some repetition, but I think it's important to make sure that, that you hear the important things from all of us, even if it repeats a little bit. When I was going through the slides and saw your project target slide, there were a few things that jumped out at me that I think are good guiding lights for the project. Under the vision, the idea of a community hub, community identity, this whole, this whole project needs to scream community. What can we do to bind us more together, to bring us together and do what we can to encourage those interactions? Under the human goals column, pride of space, I think that's going to be important. This, this can't be a, a project where we went so many directions that we ended up getting 70% of everything and it, and it doesn't pull together the way it should. It's got to be a very clean finished product. The, the technical goals, I think versatility, you've heard that from amongst everybody. We have to be able to, to adapt what's needed. But the, the meeting space, everything that's been listed. And then the open to the public, that's, that's going to be the crucial key. Whether it's we find some way to partition part of it or whether we, if there is an alcohol component, we have that locked in a way that we can still spread throughout. Because frankly, on, when we have a huge influx of teenagers on Wednesdays, maybe we want that whole space open and we want those large tables to be able to encourage that type of interaction that's going to be back near the, we'll say the taproom area instead of the bar area. But the, the goals that I'm personally looking for and I'd like to see is, I want there to be something for everybody. The senior programming, the amenities for children, for teens, the group work spaces, single workspaces, if I go by myself, I mean, it's, it's got to be something that every single person has a reason to be there. And once I'm there, I need a reason to spend as much time as I can. I think that means that coffee is critical. I, even though Starbucks is right there, if I have an opportunity to go sit down and work for two or three hours and I can just stand up and walk two steps or grab a coffee, rather than stand up and leave to go next door, I'll probably stay next door because I don't want to walk that much. It's, let's make it easy to get people who want to stay here. For that same reason, I think some type of alcohol component is important. You've got people who, who want to get together, who want to meet Saturday night. You've got two or three neighbors who want to get together and let's, let's give them an opportunity for them to, to come down and, and share some drinks and in the same breath that we have something for kids. We've got the, the open space. We've, I am incredibly excited to see what we can do with all that open land and see what type of creative ideas we can do that, that make it not just good for little kids, but if we can get some ping pong type stuff or whatever it is that will engage it for, for older kids. I mean, there's, there's so many great ideas there. Again, my theme is give people a reason not to leave and give something to everybody to get them there. I think that's enough repetition for me.
So I have loved your comment about, you know, supporting this, the community that Summit at Rock Creek might get me votes. I'm not worried about the votes. I'm, I'm worried about the fact that I live in a building that's, you know, almost a stone's throw from that. And this building is, is a dream of mine come true. I mean, at the, even before we might even acquire this building, I've always had a vision, because this is a community activity center zoning area, that this would become the indoor heart of our community, just like the parks that run from one end of our, the east side of our town to the west side of our town are the outdoor activity hub of our community. So for me, this is a dream come true because we'll now be able to activate indoors. We can already activate outdoors. I, you know, when I said that I liked the second plan better, the reason was I felt like there was a path that went through the building. One of the concerns that I'm not, I'm still not real clear is that bar, restaurant, that gathering area in the middle, my sense was that would be closed off. As long as that area remains open, even if we're not serving, you know, adult beverages there or whatever, I don't want any part of the building necessarily to always be closed off. Because I, so for me, that's, if the path's not there, I just want to make sure that we do have the ability to use that space even when we're not activating it to serve beverages. I don't think it needs to be a restaurant, but I do think it needs to be a place that we could, you know, access, you know. Personally, I would really love to be able to go down there, meet some friends, have a glass of wine after I've been down at the ball fields with my kids' team. The kids come up and hang out and they're doing their thing and then we're having a glass of wine. I personally believe we do need to have some of our Parks and Rec staff in there. I have certainly seen large community buildings where you don't have somebody that lives there and loves it and considers it part of the community, where the building becomes sort of a free for all. And so I believe our, particularly our recreational programming folks should be in that building because this is where a lot of our Parks and Rec programming is going to occur. And so I do think we need to have them in the building to help us, A, sort of maintain a sense of, you know, that things are always tidy and taken care of. But also because the programs, programming is going to be there. I think you guys have thrown a couple of great ideas at us. I'm sure you're going to take what, what you heard and come up with even better things for us. And when you hear from our community, you're going to get even more ideas. And when you hear from our community, um, you're going to get even more ideas. I want this to be a place that is busy and happy and, uh, active all the time, up until about 10 o'clock at night. You know, and, and obviously, you know, it's not going to be open all night and, and we're going to program it in a reasonable manner, but we're going to have different audiences that come in and out because some people are in school and some people come in and out after ball practice or whatever it happens to be. So, um, you know, this is, this is one of the most exciting things that will ever happen in this town as far as I'm concerned, because it is, it is going to finish something that we promised to the community when Rock Creek was developed, that this would be a community activity center and this is going to enable us to do it.
Thanks, Andy. So first, thank you. Uh, really well thought out. I want to thank the folks in the community and neighboring communities that came by tonight to listen and learn. Thank the five of you for really informed comments, uh, as well as for Laura for taking the time to meet with you guys last week. Um, you, you've got a challenge, you know, I like what Neil said around designed by committee is can be particularly challenging. Uh, we're going to, we're going to, don't let us slow you down. If you feel like, you know, designed by committee, if you're, uh, you know, taking architectural approach, oh, sure, I'll do it, you know, another drawing for you and I'll see you in a couple of weeks and I'll do another drawing and see you in a couple of weeks, that may, you know, maximize your potential billings. Uh, we, that's, we want to, if you have a design approach that is 80, 90, 95% of the way there, I, I think this board is going to be ready to execute on it. You have an approach today that is 65% of the way there. This is great. You know, if we had this, it's, oh, you know, it's cool. I think we could refine it. This is your first iteration or I'm sure you had a few iterations before we got this, but, you know, this is just absolutely fantastic. The word that you keep hearing is community, right? And so when, um, we, the, the first sort of person we talked about this, I said, you know, when you, it's what people identify superior, they love the community we live in. But then when you drill down on that, they talk about their cul-de-sac, they talk about their street, they talk about their friends that they know from the kids' T-ball team. There is really just this absence of a core here. The community is just not superior as a whole. Your community is your cul-de-sac or your neighborhood or your kids' T-ball team or your book club or, you know, and this has the opportunity to really fix something. You know, we're a pretty small town that is divided by some pretty big roads and sometimes those roads can be hard to cross. This is literally the center of town. Um, I, in terms of, uh, just the feedback that you've, that you've heard, um, you know, again, I think activating as much of the space as possible makes the most sense to me. I do feel, uh, strongly that, you know, if this was a purely a lending library with some co-work space and a coffee shop, I think that'd be good. It would serve a need in the community, but it's not going to draw from anybody outside the region. It's not going to, uh, get an article in the Denver Post or an architectural magazine because it's not going to draw the volume. In order to draw the volume, it really needs to be that, um, you know, that, that multi-generational center. In order to get the multi-generational center, for thousands of years, we've been gathering over wine and beer and things that preceded wine and beer, and we will continue to do so. And so I feel pretty strongly that that's going to happen, um, that that should be part of this design. I recognize there are challenges and I want to be very sensitive to those challenges. We have a school nearby, I want to be sensitive to that school and make sure that we collaborate with that school. We have neighbors nearby and I want to be sensitive to those neighbors and make sure we collaborate with those neighbors and be clear that our intent is not to be open until one in the morning. It's not to have, you know, live music late at night, although the idea of music is certainly very, very appealing. In terms of staff offices, if there's room for staff offices, I think that's great. But this is, you know, we don't need to have staff offices for Parks and Rec in the middle of town. We need to have offices for Parks and Rec and the sentence ends there. Doesn't need to be in the middle of town. It would be a wonderful place for a Parks and Rec to, to work. And if there's room for the Parks and Rec people within this building, once the design is complete and we've prioritized appropriately and figured out what we can afford and what we should do, then absolutely, we should fit that as appropriate and work to be flexible. Um, but I think there's, you know, a lot of opportunities, a lot of priorities that I, for this space that I would put against, that I would put up before office space. Yes, we have a need for office space, but there's other ways that we could solve that need for office space. We have a need for a community gathering spot. We will never have this opportunity for a community gathering spot like this. It will not come again. And finally, um, when you talk to, to, to entrepreneurs and people that have designed, whether they're not businesses or restaurants and you talk, you know, what, that were the, that were successful and you say, what, what one thing would you have done? You said, I, I wish I made it bigger. I ran out of space. I just, you know, you talk to the people at the sports table, you know, I, you know, things actually could have been bigger at the sports table. Another ice rink. I think we need to be very sensitive around trying to put in too much in here. And I feel like, again, if there's room for offices, I think that's fine. But if we shortchange ourselves on what we hear the most about, which is a place for our teens to gather, a place for multi-generational families to gather, a place for a senior center, and we shortchange ourselves that on those issues because we had to make room for a few offices for Parks and Rec, I, I, I think, I, I personally would be disappointed. It's still better than what we have today, but I'd be disappointed because we, we achieved 85% instead of 95 or a hundred percent. But really just fantastic. I do want to turn to Matt to really close this though and talk specifically about next steps. I want to be sitting in this building in August of this year, August of 20. Okay? I want to be sitting in this building, whatever it's activated for, in August of 20. So we talked about that last year. So I, I want to work backwards on that. Matt, I want to specifically understand what is the process to engage the community? What's our deliverable with Oz around when they're going to, how many times are they iterating? When do we expect to have a final design? Where do we go from here?
Well, we just cover schedule to start. Um, we have community engagement. What we're proposing is the first part of January would be an online engagement. The second part of, uh, January would be two community engagement meetings with the community at the, at the building itself. And then, um, report back to the board, the first meeting in February with results from that community engagement and approval of final design on the 10th. Bid out construction drawings in March, select a contractor in April and begin construction. Now, what I heard from the board the last time we discussed this was we don't want to sacrifice design for trying to get it open by August or September of 2020. So if that's changed, then we'll have to talk to Oz and see about a different process.
So I share that view where I, I also don't want to sacrifice design. I also recognize that we are an extraordinarily group of seven individuals that have more in common than we have differences, yet we often love to focus around those differences instead of the commonalities. I think we'll find a lot of commonalities here and when we find those, I want to be able to execute and not let, what's the expression? Let, you know, uh, perfect be the enemy of the good, right? I, I think we could achieve something really, really, really good. We're never going to achieve perfection, but if we lose our construction window and fall into the fall, that's going to be really disappointing. So.
Realistically, how long do we think something like this would take to do in terms of just your experience with, you know, mobilizing, you know, construction teams to do a demo, a gut, and then this sort of remodel?
You're talking about the construction duration itself? About four months would be my estimate.
So, I mean, the, the schedule is, is doable. Um, I mean, i- i- in my, in my opinion, um, you know, I want to do it right. You know, I, I don't want us to delay and, you know, micromanage this thing into a two to three year long process. I want this open as quickly as possible, but I want it done right. I want it to be as good as it could possibly be. I don't necessarily need, um, you know, it's a commitment for an August or a December or, you know, whatever the timetable is, as long as we have, you know, a reasonable timetable that we can explain to the community that is achievable and, you know, something that we can actually stick to. And I think that this is actually a, a pretty aggressive timetable to begin with, just knowing how, how the, the town operates, how the board operates. Um, but I think we can do this and I'm, I'm, I'm encouraged by an aggressive timetable.
I think we're, I, I would love to be sitting in this in August too. And, and I think we can execute on this timetable up to the point where we select a contractor. But I mean, if we're selecting a contractor in April, they're not going to start in April. They might start in April and it might take four months, but having done this type of work or been involved in this type of work for 30 years, I, I will be shocked if it's done in that timeframe. I'd, I'd love to be proved wrong, but I, I don't want us to tell the community it's going to be done in August and then be pointing fingers in August or September when it's not done, because I think that, uh, that's an aggressive timeframe.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm concerned that we may not make that.
Yeah, but one of the, one of the things that we did when, when we selected Oz and we kind of agreed on, on doing things this way was let's get some preliminary designs from Oz, have this talk with the board and then do community engagement is, you know, had we started with community engagement before Oz started on the design, we were going to get kind of a list of amenities. We got into Neil's, uh, you know, death by, you know, designed by committee, right? Where we're going to have, we want everything, figure out how to, how to fit it. And then, um, there wouldn't necessarily be anything new, uh, versus now we can actually do some sort of guided design and, and community input as to, what do you think about this? Is there anything that we're really missing here? So, you know, I, I think that the way we've already started this process is working and I'm encouraged by how it's going. And I think if we can be doing community engagement in January with an eye towards selecting a final design by February, I think that that's great.
And, and I think it's important that we look at this as a phases approach. I mean, we're already looking at a very aggressive timeframe for the first phase, which is that community engagement piece. I mean, January 6th to the 18th for online, 12th to the 18th for two in-person meetings. I mean, that's, we're talking three weeks of community engagement for, for an incredibly large building that's going to be a, a community center. How many, how many hours did you all put in to the, uh, community center slash rec center, uh, that got discussed two years ago? Uh, I mean, we're, we're already, uh, almost as aggressive as we could possibly get. I, I think where we're really going to have the rubber meet the road is this February 10th meeting. That's when we're going to see the results, we're going to hear what the feedback, uh, from the community says. I mean, for that, that meeting, if we go by what's proposed here, it's decision on uses and approval of final design. For us to not have had a chance to talk about community input and approve final design in one meeting, that's aggressive. I, I hope we can get there. I think that's a good goal if we can do it. I'm not going to tie ourselves to that because I, I don't want us to unreasonably set expectations. I think if this bleeds into the second meeting in February, it is what it is. I, we need to get this done right because we're not going to have a second, a second bite at that apple, uh, without wasting taxpayer funds. So let's continue down this path. And then I think once we hit that approval of the final design, that's when we can actually have a more firm timeframe for opening and, and that sort of thing is that, that's when we can actually get the bid construction out, uh, select the contractor and that's when things get a bit more firm, at least throughout of our hands, but.
Do you think Oz, that you'd be able to have a final design by February 10th or is that unrealistic from your perspective?
I think the way that it was just presented is really accurate. We can take all of the information from today, from the community work session and iterate it into a new design, but to try to agree on program from community outreach and approve that, and assume that we're going to nail it on the head for you guys that one time, um, is maybe the, the risk that we could hold.
I mean, I tend to agree with, with Ken that I, I think it is maybe not necessarily completely realistic to assume that we, we'll be able to get this done in one meeting. And it's, it's an important thing, we want to do it right. I imagine we're going to hear from the community, uh, a lot and, you know, big, big decisions we don't necessarily make in one, one meeting historically, given that there's probably other things on our agenda in addition to this, so.
While we may not be able to get in the building by August, I would certainly love to see us in it before we ever get to the holiday season. So I would really rather us push for a timeline in October-ish, beginning of November at the latest, um, end of year feels way out there to me. So, you know, if you have some contractor friends, you might alert them that this could be coming out and put it on their agenda to consider it or something because, um, you know, end of year feels a long way away to me. And I think we had really told the community that we would have this activated before the end of the year. So, um, you know, this is, you know, I talked a lot tonight, but I'm going to trust what you're going to come up with based on what you hear from the community. So, um, I'll split the difference and I'll go October.
So, so one of the, uh, points that Neil made earlier was, um, his interest in seeing kind of cost estimates and, you know, the à la carte pricing. If we wanted to do the, you know, stadium seating, it's going to be a hundred thousand dollars or, you know, not. And, uh, when would we see kind of those aspects? Would that be at the final design presentation would be before that? Because obviously if, if we, if we have a final design, but it's going to blow the budget, that's something we want to know sooner rather than later and.
Yeah, so we won't have cost estimates by that meeting, but what we can do to the best of our experience is identify like budgets for these features or these gems that we want to, um, move forward with so that we know generally what the budget that we're expecting some of these components to come into. And then it'll be tested once we get general contractor feedback, but we'll need general contractor feedback for that. And I, I don't know if it's an option in terms of discussing schedule, but to the extent where there's a work session, maybe like this, right after the community engagement time so that we can discuss that program quickly and then move forward to a, a final or design, that might be something to consider as well.
Like the night of a retreat. We can do a special meeting slash retreat.
If I might have a few comments. One, one thing is the, the bidding process. I don't know what you're tied to, but if it's design, bid, build, which is the normal, right? Send it out. That's one of the longest things it takes. So there is CMGC, which means you hire a contract prior to that. And I think in this case, I would recommend that mainly because if you're looking for sometime end of summer like that, you're going to be competing against the, the same kind of contractors or more of their subcontractors that go after schools. And when do they build schools? They build schools from June to September. So you're now in that mix and it's going to be a little harder to get an electrician, uh, to get some of the finished contractors to be able to want to do this. And, um, so I think we could have some problems there. Uh, now, you know, this is more of a commercial project and it's a fun project, so we'll track them. But I'm a little worried that the guy who's setting the tile ain't going to be there till September or something like that. So we want to be aware of that. Now, we can start asking our contractors, but I'm sure that's the answer you're going to get. It's really hard, hard to get more than one or two bids on any of the trades that time of year. So you want to be careful of that. And we're not doing that much outside, so we can get that sort of started early even and still be working on some of the inside parts of the building.
I, I appreciate that comment and I think you just said something that was key. It's going to be a really fun project.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And so it's fun, this is not something that we see every day and, and so hopefully that will be appealing to some of the contractors and subcontractors, so.
No, it definitely will. And I'll tell you, they'll want it in their portfolio when they're done and they'll be talking about it for years, we did that project, as opposed to remodeled the. talking about it for years, we did that project, as opposed to remodeled the school down the street.
And then just one more thing to add in terms of timing. I think the idea of if or how we program and operate and who runs it and all of those things will affect the design. And so to the extent that between now and whenever we choose to have the final design, we're either committed to a little coffee thing or who's operating the meeting rooms, who's checking those out, who's managing, how, how are we managing it to be a successful operation will affect the design too.
Okay, Amanda, Joe, Oz team, thank you very much for everything.
Is the board interested in CMGC as a way to speed up the process?
I, I leave that to your hands, Matt.
Okay.
So personally, I, I feel like that would not be, I mean, I think our priority is, my priority is to meet the needs of the community and, and, you know, not make this process by, you know, not, not make the process go forever. So I'll leave that to your expertise.
Yeah, I, I think so long as we're complying with all, you know, the requirements that municipalities are required to comply with in terms of, you know, bidding out any jobs, but so long as we're in compliance with that, I'll defer to, to you and to Oz in terms of the best way to actually execute on it.
Just for the benefit of those who may not know that acronym, can you just give a brief description on, on what?
It's basically, we, we will do a request for qualifications with contractors, select contractor, they give us a maximum price, not to succeed. We select that contractor, we go into contract with them and they're involved right at the beginning with the design firm. So we're almost doing construction type drawings as we're doing the design so that we can start almost even quicker. But we do a request for qualifications.
I mean, that seems like it would make a lot of sense to, to have their input, you know, and that would certainly speed up the process in terms of the estimates as to what things would actually cost.
No, I, I think in this competitive building environment, you've got to, you've got to deploy whatever tools you can to get things done. And if that, if that could mean that we get some people in there engaged sooner and get them going sooner, I, I think that does make sense, so.
Okay.
Okay. You had some additional information or thoughts on the retreat?
Yeah, trustee Lesh had brought up the retreat. So we had sent out some huddle poll a month ago, I think, with all available dates in January excluding Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And we, we're not able to find a date that worked for all seven. My idea was on January twenty-seventh, I think it is, this was our second meeting, take the first couple hours to do regular town business and maybe take the last three hours to do the retreat. So from eight to eleven, we would do the retreat. The other option is have the retreat on one of the dates where we can get the most trustees. So we'd go back and look at that huddle poll that we did. And the third option would be to look at Friday, Saturday or Sunday.
So in terms of the agendas that we have for the thirteenth and twenty-seventh, the thirteenth looked fairly light, right? And then?
Well, I mean, we have undergrounding discussion, we have the weed management with the goats discussion, and then there was a third item I have to.
But there wasn't like a land use application or anything like that?
There's not.
And then how about on the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh is, I intentionally kept pretty light to this point because I wanted to get your feedback on the idea I had for using that meeting for the retreat.
And then just in terms of if we're looking at February for this process, you know, is there any FDP that we should be aware of that's kind of coming down the pipe that, you know, needs to be scheduled or, or not?
No, I mean, we have blocks twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is Remington Homes in downtown Sperry. We have the Sahara's application, which would be March, April timeframe. And then we have Rogers PD, which will be this summer. So we have the Verizon macro facility application, but I don't imagine that'll take three hours to get through, so.
Is that in January?
That's in January.
Is that the twenty-seventh or the fourteenth?
Twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh.
I'm down with the twenty-seventh.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think to Ken's point, it's good to get this done as early as possible. We haven't met since July to do the retreat. Let's get it done early.
So you're saying do the, do the retreat on the end of the meeting?
That was my thought, yes.
Okay, so start at six and.
I, I'm a little concerned with this just because I, I've only been keeping tally in my head, but I think we've got like forty different items that have now built up on our retreat schedule. I know that's an exaggeration, but.
I think one of them gets covered with the first meeting in January, you know, in terms of undergrounding right away. That was one of the, one of the bigger ones. But you're right, I mean, I think we're just never going to find enough time to cover everything. It's just, we got to start.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, but with that said, I, I think we try to maximize our time that night, especially if we're going to end at eleven. So if we're going to try to do a retreat on top of a regular meeting, let's start at five-thirty, not six.
Well, if we've got forty items, maybe we should prioritize the.
Oh, we should absolutely prioritize.
Out of the forty because we are ending at eleven. I'm speaking for me and, and Laura.
I'll send out a list of the topics I have and then you can please let me know what your priorities and if I miss something, let me know that too.
But our policy is only the meetings end at eleven, not retreats.
That's why I retreats. Retreats were enlisted there.
Well, I think as a, as a backup plan, the idea of just doing retreats when the majority of people can be there, I think we've got, if we've got more material than we've got time and, and regular, regularly scheduled things, let's, let's look at just doing it when the majority of people can attend. And I think our board is good with providing, you know, if you can't attend a meeting, I think our board members are good about providing input ahead of time and, you know, reviewing the materials and providing material or providing feedback ahead of time. So I, I think there's, I think there's ways to get this done besides just continuing to push things out.
Okay. Anything further? All right, we're adjourned.